City of Stevens Point zoning board of appeals meeting recorded August 29, 2022.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody in attendance that wants to be here, I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting. Attendance for August 29, 2022, the time is 6 o'clock. And please call the roll.
I've called the roll, Mr. Chair, and have everybody in attendance noted.
Okay.
We'll do introductions as we start the hearing process.
Okay, I have also a possible recusal.
Right, we'll take, we'll address that.
Okay. Great. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 7, 2022 zoning board of appeals.
I still motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Grace, yeah, seconded by Chris, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Take it to Dean.
Yeah, let me, I'll take it over from here.
First adjutant.
The purpose for our proceeding tonight is to conduct a hearing regarding the request from Ms. Andrea Olson for an administrative appeal regarding a decision of the zoning department as to whether or not the property located at 410 Franklin Street would qualify as a home occupation under the zoning that is allowed for that particular property. We're going to start the process by doing introductions. We are then going to talk a little bit about the procedure that we're going to follow for the hearing tonight. And during that discussion, we'll talk about how we're going to handle testimony, how we're going to handle presentation of arguments. At the conclusion of the hearing, the zoning board of appeals will convene into closed session by proper motion and deliberate regarding the matter that's presented. I don't have any guarantees on time, but we will adjourn back into open session at some point in time, have a brief discussion of any decision or action taken by the zoning board of appeals, and some follow-up decisions will be made in writing. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to just, we'll go around the front table here with introductions. My name is Dean Dietrich, legal counsel. Next to me is David Zrundi, who is a partner in my firm, working with me on this case. So David is here with me to watch the process through and help me do some writing. With that, Chris, we'll go right around.
Chris Tiffany, member.
That's all we need.
George Docstader, chairman.
Ismaila Dombro, member.
Grisha Day, member.
Lynn Marco, member.
Tom Schrader, member.
Stefan Klein.
And we'll start over here, please.
Andrea Olson.
Thank you.
Andrew Beveridge, city attorney, Adam Coon, zoning administrator.
Thank you. For those in the audience, we are only going to be hearing and taking testimony based upon introduction of witnesses. This is not a, what we would call a public hearing where anybody can make any statement they want, but rather it is a formal hearing process. My understanding is, Ismaila is, has identified a potential of a conflict of interest, so he may be sitting in today as long as you want on the hearing part, but he will not be participating in the deliberations. And the first alternate, which is Tom Schrader, then will be participating in the decision-making process. The two alternates certainly have the right to ask questions during the course of the proceeding, but the final deliberations will be by the five zoning board of appeals matter members that are assigned for the case. As I've indicated to you, the process is going to be fairly informal. We're going to start with a presentation by the applicant, Ms. Olson, then we'll have a presentation by the city. We will not, we will not necessarily swear people in if, unless they're going to be giving separate testimony regarding the proceedings. Does, does any board member have any questions about the process or how we're going to proceed? Everybody's okay? And I will let the record reflect that prior to the hearing, the zoning board of appeals received the application from Ms. Olson, and that application is found on page five and six of the packet that has been submitted. That will be marked as exhibit one in this proceeding. Ms. Olson, you certainly have the opportunity to present other information as part of your presentation. Starting on page seven of the packet is the administrative staff report that was submitted in advance to all of the zoning board members. I'm not sure I sent it to the alternates.
Yes.
You did, I did, okay, thank you. And that goes from page seven to page 111. That'll be marked as exhibit two in this proceeding. The city, through council, will have the right to present additional documents and testimony as part of this proceeding. This is not a Perry Mason trial. This is not something where we're all going to be going through a whole lot of scrutiny and cross-examination. I think we can use first names as much as everybody's comfortable. Quite frankly, I don't get comfortable with that when I'm kind of leading a hearing, but I'm going to try to do so. For board members, you should wait until after there has been an initial presentation, either by Andrea or by Adam, before you ask questions. But please jot down your notes on what your questions may be so that you can ask those questions. We want to make sure everyone is given a chance to ask questions, and everyone is given an opportunity to express their information. Both, well, at this juncture, unless there's any questions from the board, I don't believe so, we're ready to proceed. And Andrea, what I'd like you to do is just to give us kind of an opening statement as to your request, and then I think you have additional information that you may want to present, and we certainly will then welcome you the opportunity to present that. The city through, the city attorney would have the right to ask questions after that's presented. Also, after the zoning administrator, after Adam's presented his information, you would have the right to ask questions of him. And again, board members, please keep notes as to what questions you may have, because you want to make sure you have any clarification of what is presented. So Andrea, maybe just an opening remark, and then you can tell us your side of the story.
Okay, pretty much, I have, before I purchased my house, I always, I've always been proactive with this. I've had my business going now from home since 2013, I think. It started out as an accident because my youth was in the hospital before my parents were gone. And then my, yeah, this dress out was right here, and I was like, here, maybe this, we made it, and it was, it was a year ago. I'm like, okay, well, I'll just go to this on Etsy, it was Black Friday, suddenly, whoops, I guess, with my marketing background, I should have better made the prices better, but I didn't, and I told you, I'm making fast, and it was in a circumstance, and suddenly my business started, and it's just gone since there. I've never done local sales because I always thought that, because there's a lot of other local businesses, they need the business versus me getting the business, so I've been doing exclusively online. I've done, I think, maybe a full of 10 local sales in Stevens Point. I moved to, or I was starting out in Plover, and then I moved to Houghton, Michigan, and when I was there, I started to work with Google Industries because I needed help making things. There is no way that I was going to be able to make them myself anymore. So I bought lumber, headed to Google Industries, and then they started manufacturing the items for me, so I wouldn't have to anymore. Then, from there, I talked to a lawyer when I was trying to help.
Excuse me one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've been advised that there are people, Adam, can you allow them in off of this?
The chair would absolutely.
Can you, are you able to allow in the people that apparently want to watch on internet? Will you, Adam, will you go help him do that, please?
Yes, Adam, I would like some help. This thing's on a main screen here. Somebody left some notes, I'm sorry, Andrea.
Well, just, just pull it up.
Zooming.
And if I, if I could suggest, please, using a microphone, that will help pick things up on the.
Okay, so, I don't, we don't have microphones for the presenters.
Podium, potentially.
Podium?
I am hot louder, too.
Here.
Shift to.
It's, it's stuck.
Are you getting audio?
Yep.
There you go.
Just gonna exit off.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, so we have people on.
Yeah. Before we go back on the record, for those who have joined us by virtual hearing, we have had introductions of the zoning board of appeals, appeals, and the applicant, Andrea Olson, and the city, Adam Coon, and city attorney Beveridge. There's been an explanation of the proceedings that we're going to go through today, which is principally going to be a presentation by Ms. Olson with the opportunity for the city to ask questions, then a presentation by the city with Ms. Olson given the opportunity to ask questions. Members of the zoning board of appeals will have the right to ask questions throughout the process at the appropriate times. After that, the zoning board of appeals will convene into closed session and will deliberate regarding the proceedings. If it is in a position to make a decision, it will reconvene into open session to simply announce the decision and then put further documentation in writing. If the zoning board of appeals will need further time to deliberate, we will go into open session and adjourn with that notification. So that brings you up to date as to what transpired. Ms. Olson is at this point beginning a presentation regarding her request for a determination from the zoning board of appeals that the activities that she is engaged in, in her residence are considered a home occupation and therefore allowable under the zoning ordinance of the city. So Ms. Olson, if you would proceed further with your presentation, we would appreciate that.
Okay, so, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So then, when I was in Houghton, I talked to a lawyer, and he said, well, make sure that you're okay to have your home occupation because we, my boyfriend and I were living in a house there. So since then, after we broke up and I was moving back here, my parents obviously didn't want their college daughter back in their house again after coming back a second time, we looked at buying a house on, or in the neighborhood downtown, looking for something that would be reasonably priced and a good location. Well, found 400 Franklin. From there, we went to the city, to talk to the city, to make sure that everything would be okay to have my home occupation. I brought in photos of everything, and Michael Estruski, his wife, Kristen, she was McCodlo, they both knew what my business was too because I had it online on Facebook, and Melissa and I are Facebook friends, and she had asked for something for her relatives too in the past. So, from that, I, when I was trying to get everything together in my documents, it said, or the city told me that they have no record of me ever having that conversation. I was like, great, so why is stuff not getting documented? So there was no documentation pretty much from any of my conversations that I ever had going in and talking to somebody at the city back then, only the email documentation. So when I asked the city for all the records, I made sure that, I was asking for anything that had occurred to when people were coming in and speaking with them, and they said that they don't do that. So then, it's like, okay, well, I guess I don't have that first initial contact that I made with the city, but I do have a lot of other stuff with the city. So I have pretty much been in contact with them, fully transparent, because after, pretty much right before closing on the house, we had realized that there was probably going to be an issue with a neighbor because we were trying, or he was trying to convince us not to buy the house, and claimed that the house had been promised to him. So we're like, okay. Well, we talked to the owners, they said, no, there's nothing there, nothing was ever promised. Like, okay. So wrote up a letter, bought the house, and then my father and I started gutting it because we wanted to do, at that point in time, I wanted my business being run out of the garage behind it and out of the basement if needed. But there was an old carriage house, because it was one of the poorest houses in the community, so they used to always take care of the horses for everybody there. So we took that down, and then, that was back in 2015, and the city knowingly approved these plans. This did not have to go before common council or anything, but these are the plans for the new garage. And this was approved back in 2015. So the city has been aware of my.
I'm gonna, excuse me. I'm gonna ask that the record reflect that the presenter has provided a very large sheet showing the plans and specifications apparently for the construction of a garage on the property, is it on the property at 410 Franklin?
Yep, no, this was at 400.
This was at 400 Franklin?
Yep.
And at this point, I don't know that I need to have a copy of that. We may have to have a copy of that.
I did request the permits be pulled for 400 Franklin in the past, and make sure that all the information that was provided, so the architectural drawings and all that be included, and they were not included in the documentation that I received. So I did try to get the emails that I had sent that were indicated that I had submitted an application for the garage to be built, but that, I don't think I, I might not have been able to find that email. I can always provide it again if needed, but the city should have it in their records, and it should have really been provided.
The record of this proceeding will note that, and I want you to keep that, we may want to pass it around during the deliberations, and then give it back to you.
Okay. So then, we did that up, and while we were working on the house, the family owned both 400 and 410 Franklin, and we decided, or I was helping them with the estate sale because we got along, and I told them just randomly, if you ever decide that you want to sell the house, just let me know. Okay, well, stuff proceeded, they got mad at the neighbor and then said, make an offer. So I made an extremely low offer on the house, $51,000, and they accepted it. It was like, holy cow, what's going on? My dad looked at me like I was crazy, but that's normally the response that I get for a lot of my ideas. So because I already had everything okay at 400, October of 2015 is when I started using the basement of 410 Franklin for my home occupation. So from then on, we had no complaints at, no, there was one noise complaint one night. I asked the police department for that record, for that one noise complaint in early 2016, and it was because I was vacuuming at night. I had been doing demolition earlier in the day, and I decided to vacuum. The cop came over, and he asked how old I was, and said, you should be out at the bars and not vacuuming at this point in time. It's like, okay, that's what's funny, but that's my life. So from then on, there were no complaints at all about my home occupation. I did have a new roof put on, metal roof, right before I had purchased the house because there were some leaks. And then I was using the garage for, and I have photos too that I can provide, I was using the garage for actually manufacturing some of the stuff, and had dust collection and all that there. And then I had my laser set up in the basement that I was laser etching on the items. And laser etching looks like this, where it uses a laser. These, it's a desktop laser, and pretty much nowadays, you can buy a home-use laser for less than $300. They've made them very popular, and there's many people with them in town, and I think over a couple million, a couple million now have been sold by one of the companies that sells like $2,000 versions that are, pretty much everybody is using online now.
At the time that you're through with your presentation, I'm going to ask that you pass that around. The exhibit, or the record in this case will show that the, that Ms. Olson showed several examples of la, what did you call it, laser?
This is laser etching.
Laser etching.
Yes, so pretty much it is where you make a graphic online. Pretty much most of my life is spent making graphics, copy, paste into my templates I've made, make adjustments, and then send it to the laser. The thing that takes longer than the laser is me actually making the graphics. So this is what that looks like, and it does.
Now, you've shown, for the record, you've shown three pieces of laser etching that you're offering to the board as examples of the work that you do in the basement, correct?
Yep.
Okay, that'll be.
Or that I did do in the basement at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty much, that's what that does, and there is a tiny bit of smoke that comes off with it. You can see pretty much how much wood is taken away, for reference. And that was always fine, had no complaints about anything until about March 2021. I had moved the business out of the house and about, it was, it was September of 2018, and then, September 2018, I moved it over to 100, it was 11, wrong one, over to Church Street. And then I was there for a while because the garage had to come down because it was completely rotted out, and my option was, okay, replace four of the five sides of the garage, or just start from scratch. I, sorry, okay, well, I'm going to start from scratch, and because I'm doing a home occupation here, I'm going to rebuild the garage in a better way so that I don't have to be in the basement anymore. I would rather be in the garage because it's, it was a dungeon. I didn't like being in a dungeon every single day. I wanted to be able to see some sunlight. So then I went to the city prior to taking down the garage, and I had permits pulled for both the raising of the garage, and John Doyle, my architect, provided plans to the city of the new garage. This was when Kyle Kearns and Michael Estruski were still working there.
Can you give us an approximate date on that, please?
I actually have the exact date, I think. No, I don't have the 2018 one, but I do, oh, property. Oh, it was on the permit, but again, that was October 24, 2019, is when the permit was issued for doing the garage.
Thank you.
I have the permit right here, too. So.
Just for clarification, this garage is at?
410.
At 410?
Yes.
You were going to build at 400 before?
However, oh, there's even more there, though. However, before doing the garage, we had also gone to the city and talked to them about raising 400 Franklin, because we had gutted it down to the studs and decided, okay, this place is going to need about as much work as it would cost to build new. So we had to go to the city and actually go to common council and get plans approved at common council to raise and rebuild, or build a new house at that property. With those plans, it was included that my home occupation was going to be in the basement. It had my parents living in the front part of it, and then me living in the back part of the house with the garage in the middle, and then it was designed to have the home occupation even underneath the garage, so going under the whole space. And this common council approved that bill. So pretty much following all the steps the whole time. Then.
I think the question that was being asked is.
Oh, no, but this is at 4, the new garage was at 410, because we decided that, after having some issues with the architect, we decided to change our mind and went, my parents built then in Plover instead.
But, but before that, I think the question was.
But this garage then.
Wait a minute, was there a new garage built at 400 Franklin?
No.
The plans were for 400.
Oh, that was for 400.
Yeah.
400 also had the new, the raising, and then the new house being built, and then 410 also then got.
None of that happened, and you built the garage.
Yep, 410 then got the garage approved again. So that was approved then, and we started building that, or I started building that at 410. So prior to moving out of 410, in the past, I had talked to the city, sent emails with, between Mayor Wiza and Michael Estruski, and trying to figure out some places where I could possibly move my home occupation to because I wanted more space. This was prior to deciding to build the garage, because I was looking for a different space to be in, I wanted to be in the community, be able to have people come in and learn how to use the equipment that I have and make things. It was like, if you're an artist in school, sometimes you feel like you, or you're told that you're not going to have any future. Well, you know what, you can make a good living if you just, sometimes you have to give up a little, but you can do well too. But people need to know how to do that, because many times you don't have the business mind if you have the artist's mind, but there is possible to combine the two, and some people just need to be led a little bit how to do that so that you can survive and thrive. So I looked at a couple different places. It was actually suggested that I move into the children's museum was one place, in the front there, but I decided against that, just because of space and how everything would have to be set up. I also looked at the premier building, and I had the city come in and look at the premier building with me too. This is the building right next to the post office. So went and looked at that with them and decided that it was way too far gone and would cost way too much to fix, and that, at that point in time, there wasn't really any other options that would work. We talked about Belkey's, we talked about a lot of other spaces. Actually, moving into part of this building was one of the options that was discussed. And I do have those emails too with Michael Estruski about those, and those occurred in around June of 2018. The garage plans again didn't start until, that was October, when the permit was pulled for that. So I was in, I was talking to him a lot, and then he had, or he told me that going to the place on Church Street would be fine. We also had, or, yeah, it would be fine there. So then at that point, I decided, okay, well, I'm just going to build the garage so that it works for me for my home occupation because, well, rent stinks, $1,400, up to $2,000 and some dollars a month. It was like, I could do, I could put that towards the garage instead, and then write off part of the garage billed for taxes and have it all okay. And that also is when I think that the zoning might have been changed to reflect that one un, or one not unrelated person can start working for you out of your home or your home occupation. Originally, when all of this started out, I could not find the zoning documents from back in 2015 anymore because they aren't online, but I was told when I first bought the house that I couldn't have anybody unrelated working for me. I tried to argue with Michael about that because. I tried to argue with Michael about that because you could get a conditional use permit and then with a conditional use permit, if city council, or with, if common council said yes, you could, wait, uh, what was I saying? Oh, you could get a conditional use permit, sorry, for a photography studio or for having barber shop or for having, uh, multiple other things like daycare, too, out of your house. But then you have to go to common council, get it approved. I'm like, why can't mine? Because I, it don't have any impact on the neighborhood, really, because with traffic, I might have two deliveries a year and that's about it. We drop off stuff at the post office, we drop off stuff at UPS. So there's not like, there's a ton of traffic or anything. I get two orders of boxes or cardboard boxes per year. I could spread that out and make them much smaller, but financially it may make sense just to do them larger and have less of an impact. So he told me that he wasn't really concerned about the, um, the traffic because the Pifner Building's right across the street from me, so you get traffic and the whole street is parked up all the time. So, but he said that then it would be a situation where if they let me do this, then it would create, open up a lot more things, which I completely understand. And also he said, well, you could get it rezoned, but there's no way that we are going to spot zone your house. And I tried to argue, well, I'm on a corner, there used to be a little grocery store, couple doors down. They're like, yeah, but that was taken down. And then that knows, that spot can no longer use. I'm like, fine. So I gave up and just decided I'd only have one unrelated person working for me, keep everything online. You can't have anything picked up either from your home if you have a home occupation and you are selling anything. So all these people that are selling on Facebook, if they actually have a home occupation or a business out of their house, they are in violation of the zoning codes and they cannot be selling anything out of their house. So I started way back in 2015, also advocating that the city start working with these home occupations because the definitions were very, very broad. I'm like, these are from 1950s. We need to start doing something to work with our community members and figure out what might help them. Work with like a lot of the other places or other towns. They'll have you actually register your home occupation where you go in, you sit down-
Wait, wait, Ms. Olson, I, I-
Sorry.
That's all, that's all-
It's irrelevant.
Yeah, it's information that may be of interest to certain people, but-
That's okay, okay.
The focus of what we're about here is whether or not the things that you do at 410 Franklin-
Okay.
Would qualify as a home occupation.
Okay, that's fine.
So I think you should go back to, you talk, in October of 2018, you were talking about the permit being issued to build the garage on the back of the parcel.
However, also, the city continues to tell me that they were unaware of me, of my home occupation and what was involved with it. And that they claim in what they'll be presenting, that I'm doing a lot of stuff that I'm not doing. So when they're, when I'm being told that I'm doing stuff that I'm not doing and photographs of a worker are being brought up or claims of three, or three workers working for me and a picture of the back of my dad is up or is submitted, I'm like, yeah, he's, he looks pretty good from the back still, but why is a picture being provided of my father by my neighbor when he knows who my father is? And-
Okay, but can you go back?
Okay.
Go back to October of 2018 and tell us what happened since then.
October of 2018, I had moved most of the business out. I left some of the business still in the basement of the house because I know that if you stop doing something, like if you have a house that is a duplex and is not being used by, as a duplex for over a year, then the city will force you to convert that house into single family. I learned that because 400 actually originally was built in 1880 as a duplex. So I knew that that might happen and I was being proactive to ensure that I did not move everything out and completely discontinue everything at my house and try to fear of that happening for some reason. I paranoid maybe, but, so I made sure of that. And then at, I did work out of the Church Street location then is LeBlanc South Side Motors on the left-hand side there for about two years. However, I quickly found out that it was less than optimal. And it had black mold in it, mushrooms growing in the bathroom, it was leaking water in, it was causing damage to things and a lot of other stuff was going on there. So since I was already building my garage, that was going to be fine, I tolerated and then move out when it was done. Well, COVID hit, all that fun stuff. The garage had to have two foundations put in, had to have, it's been a disaster. Like my contractor was there, he had to leave for nine and a half months to work on another house. Some of my things still aren't done. So now it's been a build that just keeps continuing on and dragging on. And I can't even find a contractor right now to put on siding. And I have called so many people to do it and it's true, pretty much to the point where nobody wants to work on it because of the issues being created by a neighbor, which I have to tell every single contractor when they come over, please do not talk to my neighbor. If he says anything to you, just say, I'm sorry, but I'm working and just leave it at that, nothing else. They're like, why? I'm like, issue. So let's just leave it at that and there's issues with the city, too, then. Well, what contractor wants to work with somebody then that's having issues with the city? It's like, okay, so now I'm sitting there without siding on my house still and can't even find things.
Siding on the house or the garage?
Garage, because I had to make the house match the garage. So I took off all the siding on the house then to match the garage. But I have had permits pulled on the house since about 2016, they've been pulled. Because I started right after Christmas of 2015, I started to gut the house and do renovations in it. Because as, who was it, Tom, was Tom, I think, was, might have been one of the inspectors? Or no, he wasn't the electrical one. Whoever the electrical inspector was at that point in time came in and he took photos of the electrical and he said, I've never seen electrical this bad in my life and I'm going to be using this for training. Like, great, lamp wire hardwired in, speaker wire hardwired in. And that's why you get permits, though, because when you have somebody come in then to inspect, then they see everything behind the walls before anything gets closed in so they can say, that's not done right, fix it so that in the future, nobody else is going to have to deal with it. So I'm all about permits. They're annoying and they cost a lot, but I'm like, do it right so that you don't like hurt somebody in the long run. So I started doing work on the house then. I actually had Humana in 2016, when she was over to do one of the inspections, she actually saw my laser in the basement running because I was making a gift for the winery in, it was in Rochold. So I made something then and she was onsite, saw it running, saw how everything was set up. And I've had countless inspectors for the, from the city in there. I think every single one from, and I think there's been nine changes in people in that office since 2015 at least. But I've had every single one of the inspectors in my house between 15 and now.
Again, let's, let's, let's go through the timeline first.
Okay, so-
You, it sounds to me like you've been going on for several years-
Yep.
-without further work being done on the garage.
No, it's going little by little, still. So right now, it's, since, so I moved back into the house because I was told that I wasn't happy where I was and I don't have a lease, you move out.
So when you say you moved back in, you moved your business back into the house?
Fully back into the house.
When was that?
That was September of 2020.
And tell us what, when you say you moved back in, tell us what that means. Tell us what you're doing since, since September of 2020, as far as your home occupation in that building.
September of 20, since then, I've continued the same things that I was do, or no, I have not continued the same things that I was doing when I moved out.
So then tell us what you've been doing.
Okay, since then, I no longer do any manufacturing at home. I was, the city will show one photo to, or in the packet that showed some beer carriers or some wooden things stacked in a bedroom. That was before I had moved out. The boys, because I started working with some Amish boys for making everything. I had talked to ODC, too, to make items for me so that I wasn't making everything at home. I never actually made everything at home since I moved in, but there was more manufacturing going on in the garage. The city had photos of it because I showed them, hey, try to help me find a spot. I gave them photos of everything. I spoke directly of everything I was doing at the house, what I needed in a different space. So when I moved back in, there was prototyping and that's it, pretty much. Or if I needed to fix something, like I can have stuff stacked on my table saw for two months and not use it.
What do you mean? Can you explain what you mean by prototyping?
Prototyping, so if I need to make one item for a customer to figure out if it will meet their needs. So like, where's a funny box? So if it's something that normally I don't sell. So this was originally, these two things were prototypes. One was for Dancing Goat Distillery. It was just a little photo frame for them that they wanted and a box that's not the normal size that I sell. At that point in time, it wasn't. Or like, this was for Ralph Lauren for their, um, their pottery. And they wanted me to do a box for them for a couple special customers. And they found me on Etsy since I don't really market anything. So that's what prototyping is. It's making one or two of something prior to having a reason to make more of them. And my father actually helps out by doing most of the prototyping at his house. I'll draw up the designs and then he'll build it in his garage for me, which is very nice and convenient.
Tell us some more about-
So I don't-
What you were doing as of September of 2020 in your home at 410 Franklin Street.
At that point in time, I had no garage anymore because I had to move in before the garage was finished. So I went from about 3,000 square feet, squished everything down, became even more efficient, took advantage of vertical space versus horizontal space and had my entire business then in, out of the basement because I had no other space. I had no garage, nothing.
And you still don't have a garage, correct?
No, but when I was trying to find a space, again, because I told, I contacted Ryan, no, I, this is very relevant, though. I contacted Ryan and had asked the city about their 1009 Second Street because the city owned 1009 Second Street. And I actually looked at it from July of 2020 until two weeks before I was supposed to move out of the Church Street location. And suddenly, even after we had agreed on a price for the rent, I was told, uh, yeah, we aren't going to rent to you. We, we don't want to anymore. I'm like, okay, I saw, I had stopped looking for any place to rent because I did need a specific width of a door. And I was like, okay, well, now it's going to be very inconvenient for me to move back to my house when I don't have a garage and I'm supposed to fit everything into my basement. Great.
But we, we-
So then from then-
The issue here is-
From then, I was only, yeah.
The issue here is whether or not you are operating something that is not appropriately considered a home occupation business at 410 Franklin. This board needs to know what in fact you're doing at 410 Franklin. I think I've heard you say that you have other people building different things for you.
Yes.
So can you start by telling us exactly what you're doing at 410 Franklin Street since roughly September of 2020?
Okay, I buy lumber from one of the local companies, from the mill directly. It comes in rough cut lumber. I then have that lumber delivered to Felts Manufacturing. Felts Manufacturing then takes that lumber and planes it, cuts it to width and thickness for me. So everything that you see here, this is what they do for me so that I don't have to do any of this work in my house. So I also designed all my products around a couple specific sizes of lumber so that then there'd be less inventory. So only few sizes get used and you have less waste, too, which is nice. That lumber gets processed and then we take it to the, to Amish girls that helped me out now because Amish boys, they moved away. So now two Amish girls have been helping me since about 2017, I think, making all the items. So I will call them and tell them, hey, I need X amount of this, X amount of that. And then from there, they will make whatever I need if it needs a stain, because this is a, um, pretty much no VOC, water-based stain, so it has no scent, so it doesn't need special ventilation or anything. This was used due to working with the people at Goodwill, too. And it would just be hazardous if they didn't do that. So, for their health. So then they'll make the items. And then my father, I will then go to their location and pick them up with the trailer and then we bring them home. And then I, we put them on the shelves. And if they still needs to dry a little bit more because it was really humid, I'll turn on some fans down in the basement.
So this is, they're put into, they're put on shelves in your basement?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have them put on the shelves in the basement and then that's where they sit until I end up using them. The goal was to have them, everything out of the basement, except maybe some of the cardboard boxes. And then I have a little, there's a enclosed block area that was an addition on the house. And you can see that in the aerial view that the city gave you, too. There, um, there's a little block basement, has glass block on the one side that's facing the next door neighbor's house. So there's no way anything could go out right there. And that's where I have, like my, I have a chop saw and table saw there because sometimes, like if you look at the edge here, this is a much more crisp edge because they made it a little bit too long and it wouldn't fit on to the box. So we just nip off the edge, touch up the stain so that then it can work just fine on the item. So pretty much the only type of, I guess, manufacturing then is making a modification every so random. Or if something comes in and it's broken and we don't have time, we need that item versus taking it back to the girls and having them fix it and making that better. So other than that, I use the laser for laser etching. I have a UV printer that I use for printing lac onto items, too. And that is also in the basement. And that cannot be around any dust or anything like that because if it is around dust, then the printer head gets clawed. And that is a very, very, very expensive vix and it takes about a bottle of wine because it's so difficult and frustrating.
So you, you have wood stored on shelves?
I have the finished items. So if, it's just like if somebody bought a bunch of t-shirts and they did t-shirt printing at their house. My finished items that aren't, they aren't t-shirts, instead of being t-shirts, it's these wooden, these wooden products. And then I etch onto them, so I modify them.
But I, but I, but I need to understand this. The, the, the product that comes in-
Mm-hmm.
Is completely assembled. In other words-
Yep.
If it's one of those carrying cases, it's completely assembled. It's not the four pieces and then you put it together.
Nope, I don't. The only thing that would happen is this is normally a bottle opener, so it would get a metal bottle opener added right here after it's etched. And I can't do that before because otherwise the laser would actually hit the bottle opener and you'd ruin the laser.
So, so what you're doing then is taking a, a constructed piece off of the shelf and you're doing the laser work to decorate it?
Yes.
Tell us and explain to us- Tell us and explain to us what that process is of decorating the product, decorating the constructed item.
Pretty much I. Okay, so this is what I created. I get an order in from a customer. I'll then take whatever they want and I'll do up the design in Illustrator. Like this customer decided to order and it's not something that I actually offer and they want me to copy somebody else's logo, tell them I can't, lots of back and forth. So finally, after an hour of messages, I can make something this simple for them. This then, I'll go file print, send it to the laser, and this is a laser software. It'll show up in the software there. I turn on the laser and turn on, uh, it's a, um, it has an exhaust fan on it. I turn that on and then that runs.
So it actually does, it, it burns it out in the wood? Is that fair?
It etches, it etches it. It doesn't burn it. It pretty much, it like, it, they say.
Can you pass that piece of wood around, please?
Yeah, they say that it is, they say that the wood pretty much gets pulverized. And I don't use anything other than wood, maybe like this much weather in a year. Lasers can work on tons of other things, like if there, people are doing water bottles and then.
No, just pass it around.
Well, it can do a lot of other things too. So you can etch off of, um, you can etch paint off of something. Oh, here, actually my water bottle. So this right here is laser etched away also. So it etches the paint off of it. It just uses a rotary tool, but I haven't ever used my rotary tool, am I?
Okay, so explain to us what happens during the time that you're etching one of these products?
Sorry, um, what do you mean? I'm sorry, I.
Physically, what, what happens to the product? What dust is there?
Oh, it, it actually just pulverizes the wood. So, and it goes away. There's a little bit of smoke in it, but, um, you can see how much wood goes away. This right here is the amount of soot that is created by a piece of wood about this size being burnt in, outside in somebody's, um, fire pit or at somebody's house if they have a wood burning fireplace or furnace. So, which, there are multiple neighbors of mine with, um, wood burning furnaces or, and there are many people that also have fire pits or grills because when you're grilling, stuff chars too. Another thing is, is if anybody washes their clothes and uses a dryer, you get all that lint out, going out of a house and all that dust. And you see how much you trap in there. Same thing with your furnace. If you have a furnace, that's direct vent furnace, it pulls in all the air and then it will blow out some stuff. So that comes, this is not what comes out of the laser, but there's just a tiny, tiny bit.
So my understanding, for the record in this proceeding, the applicant has provided some background information regarding the laser etching that takes place. She has shown on her laptop computer screen, uh, how the design is made and then how it is apparently transmitted to the, to the actual laser that does the, I'm going to call it cutting. I don't know if that's the appropriate word. But she has also passed around various pieces of wood showing the, um, indenting into the wood by the laser. Tell us then, after you've lasered a particular product, what do you do?
After it's been lasered, I put it, I take the sheet of paper, hopefully I didn't make any mistakes. I take the, if it's one of the lids like that, I'll take the lid, take the customer's order, set it on the shelf and hope that I didn't annoy my dad too much and he's going to come and help me package stuff up the next day. So he'll come over then and he will take the item and then get the right sized box for it, also order specific sized boxes, trying to make it as streamlined as possible. He packages it up and then he, or then he'll write the name, customer's name on the outside of the cardboard box. And then I'll, um, go over there at some point in the day and print out a shipping label and stick it on the box. From there, it'll go into my car or my father's vehicle and we will go to either the post office or U P S with it. I used to back in, prior to.
Don't tell me what you used to.
Well, I, okay.
No, don't tell me what you used to.
U S, U S P S used to come over twice a day to pick up, like during the holidays. Um, because U S P S is shorthanded, we decided that we'd be nice to them by dropping everything off, so we drop everything off.
So does the product, when it's boxed, sit in your basement until you take it to the U P S or the post office?
For less than a day because normally that's the schedule that I'm on.
Okay. You had mentioned at one point in time that, um, is there, is there product stored at your father's house?
Only stuff that gets damaged or he's fixing stuff. He does have some lumber at his house that he's working with, but he would be considered, um, a offsite contractor, just like the girls are considered that. During COVID though, I did, um, one, or there were a couple of friends of mine that were hit very hard with COVID and they had to shut their businesses down. So I did have two other people making items for me. And I had one girl that would just take the, um, the stuff to my house. I end up with getting a lot of the bottle opener orders. So she'd just, we either drop off or she'd come over and pick up a bin of orders that were completed and she would package them up at her house and then ship them out. So it was offsite again.
When you have these third party contractors making these products, are they, are they nailing boxes together, screwing them together?
Steve, or Steve Decker did. So he was doing the same thing as the girls were doing. He, it was not onsite though.
Right. But I, just to give me a sense of how they construct the box. Are they constructing the box?
Uh, it just has, yeah, if it's, if they're constructing it, they have, they grab, we drop off the lumber normally. Rare, like for Steve, there was a couple rare occasions where he picks up some lumber instead of us dropping it off.
But they don't do that in your basement?
No.
So the only thing that's, that's done in your basement is the etching?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming you have storage space where you put the product before you're able to work on it?
Yep, in the basement and I have photos of it. But since about August of this, was it, yeah, August of this year, since I had, um, the city told me, no, it was August of last year, sorry. It was August of last year, um, I had a deadline where I had to move the, um, exhaust fan that I was using. So then that's when I started to have to spread things out between the basement and the garage because we got one of the outlets working in there. So then I moved the laser or the exhaust and the lasers upstairs into the garage.
But the garage doesn't have any siding on it?
No. But it, or it has, it has the, it has, it's tivec'd, so that's fine. And it has, um.
So it's enclosed?
Yeah, it's enclosed now, yeah. It's been enclosed for a while now. I have, I have photos showing when it got enclosed and all that. But the first year that I was back, it did, was not enclosed. So I couldn't use it.
And explain to us what the exhaust fan was for?
It's for, because when you hit the wood with the laser, it creates, it pulverizes the wood and it creates like a little bit of smoke.
Okay.
So you can see like, on this one, I think you'll see that there's a tiny little bit of smoke right there along the edge and that's what happens when the wood gets pulverized.
So what is the exhaust, what do you, what is that designed to do?
It moves air. It moves air away from it so that, um, the smoke from the, um, laser then doesn't just sit in there. So I had, so, yeah, so that's happens.
And where's that exhaust now?
Right now, that the exhaust fan is in the garage and it just blows outside.
And so do you do all your laser cutting in the garage now?
Yes.
Not in the basement?
No. I did have for over, until Christmas, so I was working around contractors because I didn't really have an option. I was working around the plumbers, the electricians and the drywallers and it was sort of, it was interesting.
Yeah. Ms. Olson, I, I've asked you a number of questions just to try to get out what I think are facts that the zoning board of appeals needs to hear and consider. But I really need now to turn it back to you. I'd ask you to focus on what it is that your, your position is, why you feel you should be allowed to continue, conduct your business at home. I, I shouldn't be leading you through this. And you should really be telling us how, why you want, you've told us a lot about your prior contacts with the city. I, I think we get it, okay? You're not happy with your prior contacts with the city. But the issue right now is this board needs to interpret the zoning ordinance. So we need to understand your position.
My position is, the city has known about this since I started doing everything. I have, I'm doing less at home, like that's creating an impact on anything now than I did in two thousand and fifteen. The city has known about this since prior to me moving in. And if they okayed this knowingly, the zoning, like zoning has to go over any permit that's pulled, like for my garage, zoning had to review that prior to okaying the build for the garage. Well, I think, um, in one, in the last training video, I think there was an instance where if you, if it's approved, you pull your permit and then suddenly while you're working on your project, you find out that now you're, um, now you're in violation of the zoning, maybe you should, maybe you should stop doing stuff now. I'm like, I just like, I separated off the garage so there would be space for a vehicle in there, I'd have space to work in there. I've invested a lot of money based on being told I can pull my permit, being told that I can build this. Like, I was told mult, three different times that, sure, here, even by common counsel, sure, here, you can build this. So I don't see why I suddenly should not be able to continue my business there. I do not have, like, I have a very, like, I have, actually today, I decided to try to limit myself to less than twenty-four hours to see how many surveys I could get, um, sent out and then submitted by neighbors and community members about how they feel, uh, home occupation, if it, they, what their thoughts are on home occupation, if they think that one should be allowed, that you cannot tell if it is going on within that house by driving past. I gave them these photos and then a survey. I have over sixty responses. I put, I did not review any of them myself. The survey is still going on because I didn't turn it off. Um, I did it online. I had friends send it out. It does have bias in it because obviously Facebook friends are pretty much like people think alike, so most of your friends on Facebook are just like you. So there is bias due to that, but I did go around to my neighbors to, as many as I could get to between like six P M. last night and then this afternoon today.
So you have pictures of your four ten Franklin Street?
Yep, I took pictures of all the houses in a row on the street and asked, and people didn't even realize these were the houses on Franklin and asked them.
And one of the other documents?
Um.
What do you, what else do you have there?
This is the survey that I gave.
Not the answers?
I also have some answers from people too, um, printed out. And then I put the fifty-five respondents at the time, about fifteen minutes before this meeting, I put those responses on a jump drive that I can provide.
Well, we, we need to.
But.
We need to see some of that now, so.
Yeah, I, I have the drive and I have the responses from, I haven't read them. I can give them to you though.
We're not in a position to set up and read as a jump drive.
That's, I know, that's fine. I've just, but I can, where is it? They are.
I don't know how relevant this stuff is to the deliberations by the board of appeals.
I have a question, I have a question if you mind. You mentioned that, uh, your permits that were, you're being told now you can't. So are you saying your permits for your garage build have been pulled? Is that what you're saying?
No, they have not been pulled, but I'm being told that the reason, like, they knew about my home occupation when I had the permits pulled. There, um, Adam and Ryan were not working there then. So one of the things is, is that now when you have a turnover of staff, different staff might interpret things differently. So even though I had no complaints about my home occupation from two thou, October of two thousand and fifteen, when I moved in, and up until, um, March of twenty twenty-one, and I had actually moved back in fully, running everything out of my basement from September of twenty twenty to, or to March of twenty twenty-one. So I was back doing everything there with no complaints either. And then suddenly, March happened and complaints started coming from one individual over and over and over and over again. I asked the city to, um, if any other complaints had been put in by anybody else. And they told me, no, and then it turned to a yes. And it, um, they told me that somebody at the city or at the A D U, A C U meeting, um, came over and put in a complaint. They said that it was Gerald Rasmussen. I said, there's no way that he could walk over there because he had, um, late stage cancer and according to Annette, who was his caretaker.
Wait, 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 wait.
Couldn't do it. But, oh, it turns out that he did not sign in and it was false.
Oh, please, we're not going to talk about somebody's medical condition.
Okay, but he couldn't have gotten over there. It turns out he never was there. Nobody, the city does not have a record of any complaints. They put that in the records that they pulled too, that there were no other complaints put in at that point in time. The most recent records I had polled, I asked for on the eighteenth, I was asked for on the eighteenth and then it took two weeks for, or was it eight, no, it was given to me on the eighteenth. I asked for additional records, this was where, um, it was when I had not been notified that this meeting was actually going to occur. Well, then I got COVID, I have my test results here from the government if needed. And I was really annoyed and I'm like, okay, well, I was never alerted about the meeting, never received my packet. The only reason why I knew it was actually happening is because I watched what gets posted online and saw that my meeting was actually coming up. So I then was annoyed and I requested updated record request for everything regarding four hundred four ten and then three three two Franklin and a couple other properties to make sure that nothing else was missed and to make sure that everything was provided to me. So I then found out there still were no other, um, complaints put in by anybody else except for one individual. And that was also the individual that wanted, that, um, claimed that he was promised four hundred Franklin and then also four ten Franklin. And there's been on and off issues since then. I have all the police reports too and his claims and voicemails that conflict with what the police actually indicated. So.
Board members have questions?
Hold on, Chris, is that okay?
Yeah.
Lynn, you have a question?
Yeah, I have one question. So you got the permit to raise the garage and then build a new garage? Um, zoning has a number of components. Um, one of the components is dimensions, you know, is it set back the right distance from lot lines or the street or whatever? Height is part of dimensions too. But another part of zoning is uses, like how are you going to use this building or this lot? And so I would be curious to see the garage permit and see if it says anything on it about the uses of that garage.
Um, I don't think that it actually says the use on it because they just give the totals and the required inspections. And zoning initial inspection is one of the ones on it. But they did have, there is documentation stating what I was using it for. So the permit might not say it on it, but the emails definitely do.
Is that in the packet?
Um, that's not in the packet, but that is something I could pull off my permit.
Should that be, uh, for some more numbers?
Would it be the application for the permit?
The application.
Yeah, I think that probably would be appropriate.
Application or the relevant emails prior to and after that because the city knew. And I went in there and spoke with Michael and Kyle prior to even building the garage because I was told that it would not have to go to common council because the plans were not enough, I guess, different from what the last garage was to require it to go to common council for having to get approval.
Okay.
So the emails would prove that they know it. I don't know if the zoning, or if the permit will say it on there because the city determines what they're going to be writing on the permit.
The permit, I don't think would- The permit, I don't think would say anything regarding use other than garage.
Yeah, currently we don't. Many other, um, places do. And that has been something that I have been advocating for since 2015, that, for home occupations. Because I knew something like this was going to happen because of the issues that initially started with the individual back in 2015.
Do you, do you have any, anything else to offer to answer the question?
Um-
Did you submit plans-
Yes.
Showing that the, that the back part of the garage was gonna be used for this laser cutting purpose?
I did not put the direct, like, where it would have to be sitting because I wasn't asked for any of that. I didn't, I didn't know that this was going to be this type of issue. Like, if I was moving into, um, a commercial space right now, I would have to say where some of the equipment would be to ensure that the, it wouldn't be considered, like, if I'm going into a spot like, that's B2 there because I'm using a laser, that they consider, could be considered, um, not, or manufacturing then. But packaging a box up also is considered ma, manufacturing, I guess. Didn't know that. But even that's, putting something in a cardboard box is considered that. So I could, you can only have a certain percentage of the square footage there to be doing that. So if I had been told, if I had been asked for that, I would have.
Did you identify the purpose for the back part of the garage?
Yes.
What did you say?
It is going to be used, be used for my business and building this garage pretty much for my business to be used so that I'm not-
Was that in your application?
It should be, I hope. I can go through because I think I have everything printed off.
Is this something that you want to read out?
Yes, please. I think if you can. Um, does other board, I, I wanna offer Attorney Beveridge an opportunity for you to ask questions. I, I guess, Ms. Olson, have you, is there anything else you wanna tell the zoning board of appeals?
Um, that, of what I'm doing or going through? The, my thing is, is that this was all based off of one individ, what one individual is saying. And when you are, like, these are the police reports. And I ended up having to file one too because the individual, anytime he was leaving his home for a while, was doing two laps around the neighborhood after the city had told him to document, document, document. Yeah, claiming that the street's getting blocked off and, from deliveries. I have photos here. We did block off the street one day because we were taking down a tree and it was going all the way across the road. When complaints were being made too about when I was blocking off the street with deliveries, wa, or Forest, which is Franklin goes like this, Forest goes like this. Forest was completely closed down then. So it was blocked off, not by me, but by construction. So all these claims that are getting put in, like, I'm causing mold on somebody's house, like, clean your gutters. Like, that's not something that I'm doing. I can't be, like, having exhaust on the op, like, I did everything that the city asked for too. Like, I moved it from here to the back, like, where they said, have it in the garage. I'm like, okay, did that. Guess what? I got a fine. I, suddenly I'm not in, or I am now, um, using, doing commercial business in my house. And like, I, I just did what you asked of me. And prior to that, you had asked me, um, DJ came over first for an inspection and he told me there was nothing, like, I was doing wrong. I had, I had it plugged in in the basement. He's like, you, like, should I just put a plug on the outside of the house because then I won't be in violation? Sure. He's like, well, I'm like, is it too loud? Because that's what I've been being told. He's like, no, it's not too loud. Like, because I had bought a, um, enclosure that I could have put it in to make it quieter. He's like, no, don't even do that. It's fine. But the city doesn't document these types of things. They only do, like, the only information I got is what you have in your packet about the violation, which just says it's a violation, but it doesn't tell you what you're doing wrong or how to fix it. They'll tell you in person how to change things and half the time tells you in the message. But then again, you didn't document it. It didn't happen. Like, okay, so then I had it in back, had to move back downstairs for a little bit. One, and one of the voicemails that the person that was, um, putting in the complaint says is, just have it in front of her garage, let it's not blowing in front of, or alongside the house. I'm like, okay. So before that, I put, um, a tube on it so that it would not be blowing anywhere near that person's house. I had it going completely in front of my house. I had then moved it out back. I moved it back into the basement because the drywallers had to finish drywalling. So then it was in the basement and I had it so that you can't even tell because it's inside and it just looks like a vent on, dryer vent on the side of the house. I bought a different type of floor because the one that I had been using, that one is typically used for sawdust, but that's what they sell with all the different lasers if you're going to have, um, exhaust on it. So then I bought a different one. It's actually for a bounce house, kids' bounce house. So I'm like, okay, so I'm making sure that this is something that anybody could have at their house. Started using that one. Switched to a different one because that one just moved too much air. So when the air is moving, that's what's creating most of the noise. It's nothing, it's not a motor or anything like that. It's just the air moving. So then I bought a different one that you normally use in a grow room or an attic fan, or it goes into your attic. So I'm like, this is 100% used in a house. I'll use this one instead. And that's currently what I have set up. I have one that you'd use in a grow room.
Where is that set up?
That is currently in the garage.
Okay.
And it is, if you're looking directly at the house, it is in the back left corner of the garage so that the neighbor is not, or the neighbor is over here. So there's no way that any noise from it, anything should be able to be complained about. I did add on, like, a little insulated, um, exhaust, or insulated duct on to the end of it just to dampen the, um, airflow noise out of there. Because in addition to this, I had talked to the city. I'm like, okay, I really wanna fix this issue so that complaints just stop. And like, here are some plans for, it doesn't require a permit, but can I put, can I build a structure that looks like it's for garbage cans next to the garage? It's going to have the same exact siding as the garage too, but trying to get the siding on the garage so then I can put this up. It's built, I have photos of it already being built and, cause I built it inside my garage to then move outside of it. So they'll have the garbage cans in it and then I'll have the, um, exhaust fan in there and it'll exhaust from the inside of the garage through the wall into this structure, which then, you're inside the structure. I also bought a ton of the, um, acoustic panels to put in there to make it even quieter. And I did offer to also put on a charcoal filter onto it, which typically isn't needed unless you're going to be, like, exhausting inside your space. And most people do not exhaust, keep the exhaust inside of the building. They exhaust out.
Is it your intention to con, to do your, uh, etching in the garage throughout the winter?
Yes.
Do other board members have questions?
I do-
Of, of the applicant?
Just clarification. So essentially what you're saying is that since you moved back in 2020 to 410, you've downsized the operation because you outsourced other things. And the only thing that occurs on that property in terms of home occupation right now is the etching. And maybe storing some of the products you pick up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I do not have massive quantities of lumber delivered or pallets of lumber delivered to the house other than what was needed for the construction. I don't even have pallets of items delivered because we'll go and pick it up in my trailer. So then it's enclosed in the trailer and then we'll move it out of the trailer and bring it inside. I was waiting to hire, oh, because you can have your one unrelated person working for you. I was waiting to hire somebody on a regular basis until my house was done and I could have a nice bathroom to be used too because I thought it was very inappropriate to have them using the bathroom in the basement because, well, it's just, it's a creepy block bathroom that's bleh. I wouldn't wanna ask anybody to be using it. Um, I did shower in it for a while though. It was weird. Um, but I did, um, wait on that. I do have one guy that comes over sometimes if I really need the extra help, typically during Christmas season to help package stuff up or to help with a graphic or something. Otherwise, it's, um, my dad helps me every day except for Thursdays when unfortunately he golfs.
So the, the etching is now done in the garage?
Mm-hmm.
The packaging is done in the basement?
Yep.
Okay. And then it's ta, it goes from your basement to the post office or UPS?
Yes. And the intention is, is to move the packaging up to the garage too. I have a spot designed for it, um, and that was, it should have been in the plans too, um, where I was going to be having that because I made sure that everything was okay. Originally, I was going to move my, um, the couple saws that I have in the basement up to the garage. So if I did need to fix something, I would be able to just go from where the laser is to the, I had a partition set up in the garage, pretty much that in the long run, um, like, a vehicle could go in there. Short run, I'd be using it for my saws and stuff. But since all of this started, I'm like, okay, well, I'm just going to keep those couple saws in the basement. It's block, it's underground, it should be very quiet since there was a claim made that I was blowing tons of dust out of the house so much that it was, um, plastering on people's windows. And I had the back door open and it was blowing out. And I'm like, okay, to do that, I need at least a 30 to 50-foot hose since they're in a room at the back of the garage. You would have to come out, go around the corner, go up the stairs and out the side door. So my thing is, is that all these complaints have been around one person and it is very obvious that he's not telling the truth. The only thing, or, okay, it's, okay, um, the, the city, yes, the city is-
Finish your statement to the zoning board of appeals.
Um, so it was, this, all of this stuff has been made around one individual. All my other neighbors that I know of have had no issues with what I'm doing. And unless I, like, unless they really know me, they don't even know that I have a home occupation. Do, filling out the survey, I made sure that one of the questions in the survey was, do you know that 410 Franklin has a home occupation? If so, and you say yes, is it because you know the individual or has the individual told you that she has a home occupation? Is it because she has a, had a graphic on the side of her vehicle? Is that what, did you make the assumption that she had one based on a graphic on a vehicle? Which, somebody works for heating and cooling, they have a graphic on the side of their vehicle. Do they actually have a home occupation? You don't really know. Um, so I wanted to make sure that I had that in there in case somebody made the assumption that an occupation was done because of graphic on a vehicle. But the point is, is that you can't, like, I'm doing nothing, like, out of the normal. If you have, like, I showed right here, the amount, if somebody has, um, a wood-burning fireplace, uses a grill, uses anything at home, like burns their burgers or their chicken castle or, or something, and it blows out, the exhaust fan goes out the side of their house, they are creating more, if not the same amount of any type of scent, any type of anything that I'm doing. And there's no way, like, to etch off enough. When etching this much, this and a fireplace turns to this. How many items do you think that I have to do to create this to then create that? Pretty much maybe two logs per year, if that even is what I take off and I put outside. And I did make sure that there were not any, like, environmental requirements for me either to do so that I would be in compliance with that. But I, I did everything that I should have had to do. I went, I feel like I went above and beyond too, to make sure that I would be fine having my home occupation. And now if I can't have it, that means that the money that I just invested into the new garage, yes, of course, it can be used for something else. I can't, like, that part of this appeal doesn't matter. I, it always has a use because it's R3 or R2 and it's a really nice house. I set it up, the new design, the upstairs is set up to have a nanny up there or an elderly parent, somebody. Because my sister was potentially moving back here, so I made it where her nanny could be able to go upstairs and use the rest of the house. Or if her nanny wasn't coming, I could still stay in the house and then she could, or they could use the rest of the house. So I made it so that it would be very, very good for a long-term rental since I end up, I intend to move next door in the long term, but.
Okay. Does, the zoning board appeals members have other questions?
How many things do you etch a day?
It varies. Like, I could do none up to Christmas season. At the most, I think I ever had to do was about 101 days. And that's because it's Christmas, but that's maybe, it goes from part of November until about two weeks into December. This year was really rough because I had all the items out. Oh, this is how, this is a good gauge of how much, um, I have for even the Christmas season is, I put up a carport on my garage because the drywallers are supposed to be coming between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So I put all my items on carts because I have them on mobile carts. I put them up at the carport. The Durachio came, lifted up the carport that was attached down, went into the backyard and all my stuff flew all the, all over the driveway and got all wet. And we had no power that day either. And yet there was a phone call with a complaint due to dust and noise, due to me running any, everything, but we had no power that day.
Okay, one, one question. You mentioned that on the blueprints for your current new garage, you have it called out, that you submit to the city, called out for storage and space for your lasers on there?
It had, it should have had, it should have had if the architect submitted the right final plans. I do have the final plans printed out.
Wouldn't be able to see those?
Can we see those, please?
I think I brought them in.
I do. Follow up on that.
Okay. Wait, wait, wait. Let's learn, see if you can find that.
I can find them while he speaks. That would be rude. I have them here though. But, um, the architect did have an error in the plans though and the whole thing got built two feet too short. And there was an additional opening left, so I had sort of an elevator shaft over the-
Adam, do you have? Do you have the, what was the permit or the application that was submitted?
I pulled, pulled the application that was submitted.
Can we, you can show them on the screen?
And that was one thing I was gonna mention is, I can pull it up on my phone. Obviously, it's a pretty small screen. So I can pull it up on, yeah.
I'd like to take a five-minute break if we don't mind. Why don't you do that so we can follow up with that question? Tom, do you wanna follow up with a question about the work that she does?
Oh, I do have, I found the survey.
The etching again.
Yeah, go ahead. Ma'am, Ms. Olson, he's gonna ask you a question.
Yeah, I noticed in the packet here it references about 34,000 sales since 2013. So is each one of those an etching thing?
No.
Okay.
Some of them are UV-printed, some of them are etched.
I was just trying to figure out how often you etch.
I, oh-
On average, is it?
On average-
A day, 100 a day?
It'll vary. Like, like I said, I had between November and December.
That I know.
Yeah, but-
Adam, why don't you?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but it, it varies.
Pull that up?
But I-
Why don't you do that? Yeah.
I can say there's a fair amount of information that is presented in this packet though, where things were taken out of context too. And if you, there is a seller in town- And if you, there is a seller in town, I printed off her Etsy page, that in the past year and a half, she, which I also told the city in an email, she has made and shipped significantly more items than I have. And she makes keychains. And I printed off her shop and then another shop that is also based out of a home and another one too, that all make or print out items and ship them out.
And seventy-five?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I need a motion to go in, go on a break.
No, you can, we can, you can just declare a five-minute recess.
We're taking a five-minute recess. While we get our IT experts, pull up all their stuff and find all that information. Thank you, everybody.
Ms. Olson, you had expressed, before we took the break, you had expressed you, there were, you felt there were other people that were operating similar businesses out of their home.
Yes.
Could you briefly go through that again so we have that on the record?
Okay, so there are multiple people within the neighborhood actually that have home occupations. This, I, if you look, I'm the dot here, I also printed out photos. I also have some of the setup of my, the interior of my house right now, the garage. I have photos there. Any of this stuff right here, that's flooring for upstairs and for in the house. So you'd have to ignore the hardwood flooring. But I did bring photos of how everything is set up. Some of it is messy from when I was having to move stuff around. I even have photos of when I had moved back in and I can put the dates, like, of how things were set up when I had moved back in in 2020, all that.
Would you pass those around, sir, if you take a look at them?
So some of these are from 2020 and then some of them are newer ones. And there is, I do have a shed out back that I pulled a permit for this blue shed that you can see in here. The blue shed is where I do store, like, some of the lumber for emergencies. Then if my dad needs it. And you can see, like, this little item in the corner that's tiebacked, that's the little structure that I spent money on to get built to be able to have it exhausted and help the side of the garage that could then be the sound insulated one. And if needed, which I request or said that I would do, is put in the filters in there too if that so needed. But I, DNR, all that stuff that I know of and search for, you don't need that.
Ma'am, we need you to present the information so it can be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
As I, ma'am, as I now understand, you're saying there's another building on your property that you use for your business?
That has a little bit of lumber stored in it. It's actually on some shelves there. It's out back. If needed, I could move it into the garage.
What else is that building used for?
It has the supplies for finishing up, the contractors threw some stuff in there for the house.
Do you put, do you have like lawnmower or anything like that in there?
No, it could fit in there though, because there's enough space.
Okay, this is a, this is an outbuilding on your property and you're storing, are you, do you store any completed product in there?
No. But the city did know about that. Actually, I had to pull a permit for it due to it being a shed. And then he didn't come over and take a look at when it was being installed because it has to have a certain amount of offset. I do have the emails from that too because it was a bunch of back and forth because he thought that I was trying to put a car in it. And I said, no, it's just a shed, my backyard is fenced in. So there's no way that I would be needing to access it from the alley. I just have a door.
Please understand, ma'am, that all of these permits and all of these emails, you either need to present them here or you need to present this stuff so we understand how you are operating your so-called business on the property before this board can consider whether it falls under the definition or not. What is it, would you like to present to us?
Would you like to see the permits for the?
No, don't, don't ask them.
Oh, sorry.
We have the permits, you're talking about the permits for the garage?
No, for the shed. You have the ones, or you should have the ones for the garage, should have ones for the shed. I tried to get, also, many of these things were not included with the information when I had requested it.
Okay.
For backup. So I was going through emails trying to make sure.
Put the permit for the garage up on the wall?
Yeah.
All right, Adam, can you please do that?
I have a question, Rose.
Go ahead.
One of these pictures shows a large stack of lumber and banding. What is that a picture of?
Which one is it? That is prior to me moving out, that is lumber that we picked up and brought it there and then to take out to the girls to make the items.
And how long would you store something like that in place?
That, I think, was less than a day. It was my birthday, we picked up the lumber and the girls needed it. So it was November nineteenth, so it was the holiday season, so it would have probably gone out there that day.
Okay.
And if it was there, it would have to be covered up because the lumber cannot get wet or it gets damaged. And then it's not used. Like, any damaged lumber typically has been getting donated to different arts people.
So, follow-up question, how large is that stack? There's nothing on the side of it, so there's no real context. I believe it was.
It's a bunk, so normally it'll be a bunk. So it's like, I think that was eight feet by four feet by four feet.
Each one?
A bunk, yeah. So if I'm ordering lumber, it depends on, but that was just what we were moving that day.
And then these delivery vehicles, are they for when you were doing construction?
No, yes, those ones are for construction. As you can see, there is drywall going in the upstairs. That is also when it was reported that I had business deliveries blocking the street. But they were all construction-related.
For the construction on the garage in the house?
Yes. So there, on the day where one of them said that I had blocked the road, it's when that shower pan was delivered. And those also were all during the road construction. So Franklin was being, or Franklin and Forrest had the work, had the things going on.
All right, if the board of, board of appeals would agree with this, I'd like to have Adam explain what is up on the screen and to, we'll have to scroll down.
Yeah, did you want me to sit up front with a chair?
Yes, just, just to, just to run it, yeah. So this is the commercial permit application for the garage?
That is correct. So for, I can kind of give a brief background about the permitting process. So if somebody comes into our office, wants to do some sort of development on the property, if it's a new shed, new garage, driveway, fence, items like that, you would fill out the first couple rows. General background information about the applicant, the property in question, contact information, which you see the applicant has filled out. And then, I'm just going to zoom out a little bit more. The application is broken down into four different trades, building and zoning being one, electrical being two, plumbing being three, and HVAC being four. And you complete those sections based off of the type of the work. So, for example, if somebody is looking to build a new home, odds are you're going to be filling all four of these sections out because you're going to have electrical, plumbing, HVAC. If it's a case for a shed, a garage, in this case, building and zoning would be for sure one you would fill out. And then electrical, maybe depending again on the scope of the project. So really, the key information that our admin staff and our department is looking at is the building and zoning section here. So what's the cost of the project, both in labor and materials for recording purposes? And then specifically, what's the work detail? So you have it, the applicant has it filled out in here alongside the contractor information. And that's kind of about it. We have them sign and date at the bottom.
Is there any significance to the fact that it says "commercial permit application"?
Not necessarily offhand.
I was wondering about that because there's a residential permit application for garages.
Yeah.
That would have been my, that's, some of that is not my handwriting on there.
Or contractor to his property owner?
The building and zoning in that part, that is not my handwriting right there. Going across there.
The work details?
The.
Twelve thousand, eight thousand for monthly?
Now, that, I can say, I can tell you the twelve thousand, eight thousand is one of our admin assistants' there handwriting. So this chunk would be their handwriting, this chunk, the twenty for the zoning fee. And I believe the property owner, the rest is neither one of ours.
I have to, yeah, I'd have to check to see if that was one that was sent to me to fill out or if I pulled it off of online. If I pulled it off of online, I accidentally pulled off the wrong one, that would have been on me. If it was one that was sent to me to fill out, then it wouldn't be on me. But I can figure that out too very easily.
This is the entire document?
That's the entire document of the application itself. And it was addressed a little bit later, plans itself. So, I mean, it's ten pages, I don't necessarily, I don't know who needed, or how you want me to go about.
Scroll down.
Just scroll down and, okay, so you have the north and south elevation, east and west elevation, the first floor, floor plan. Floor plan for the second floor. And just more, really more building code information as far as stairwell, trusses, bearing walls, foundation plan, framing plan.
Wait, go back.
Framing plan?
Yeah, was it, just, just wanted to see, it's just numbers, go ahead.
And then the last page is roofing plan.
Ms. Olson, is this, is the garage a two-story?
Yes, it is. I have it in the photos too.
What is this top story, what is the second story?
That's living space.
Pardon me?
That's living space. So that's, also, the entire garage is heated too. I did hydraulic heat and then have been switching over the whole house to have two air handlers.
So it's enclosed and functional now, it just doesn't have siding?
Correct, and it needs to have some of the electrical finished up. And I'm installing the flooring right now upstairs. And it's awful, don't ever put in shorts. And have some, or some of the bathroom tile and that type of stuff.
And just one last item.
And I do have to say that that plan was submitted by the architect, if I remember right. And that is missing some of the items on it, like the split wall that was put in there to separate out the front of the garage from the back of the garage. That was not in there. I do have the photos that I sent to the architect that were supposed to be then put onto the plans prior to him submitting them. And it looks like it wasn't done. But also, as you saw on there, there's that little space in the garage that's sort of closed off that they consider patio in the amount, in the square footage of the house. That's a back patio on the, where is it? It's in the packet. It is what was being used for calculating the amount of space I use for the house, which.
Page thirteen.
Thank you.
So the garage is attached to the house?
The garage is attached to the house and if you.
With the walk-in?
Yes, so if you look at your packet also, the emails between Kyle and Humana and then Humana and somebody that works for the state, it says that the garage, or they're asking questions about a detached garage and not an attached garage. So also, if you look at, since, since the city, in their definition of home occupation, it's very, it is not clear at all. And in the packet, they've used Webster dictionary or Webster dictionary definitions. And I asked, I think, over ten times for the definitions to be explained to me that I was violating. And was told that I have a woodworking business from my house. I don't do woodworking at my house. I do personalization of an item or customization of an item. So somebody that's making stickers, they're printing onto a sticker, they are doing customization. Somebody else that's going, that could possibly end up in the same exact situation as me is building an, or is building a garage on Bukop Avenue, which is a couple blocks away. And she also has a laser, but she focuses, she uses it for some things. And she sells those items at Agora and other local places. Agora is all about having locally-made things. So most of the things in Agora are all done for wholesale purposes from people's houses. And that's the same thing, if you look at any of the items in Stevens Point or even at Co-op, where they have items that they're purchasing wholesale from somebody typically being made at home or on an off-site location. And there's tons of that going on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is not their appeal, this is your appeal.
Okay, sorry.
Is there anything else, Adam, you want to show us?
Yeah, last item I just pulled up just since it was, the applicant mentioned, the shed that was, the permit that was pulled for, in 2020, for a shed in the backyard. And this is the application. And again, same structure, contact information, and then the work details specifying the development standards for the proposed structure.
Okay, thank you.
And Adam was there when it was being installed? And I said that it was going to be having some lumber in it. He said that you'd want to put a couple block, a couple more patio blocks probably underneath the center of it if it's going to be having that. So he was fully aware of the use.
All right, Mr. Beveridge, is there anything you would like to ask of Ms. Olson before you begin your presentation to the zoning board of appeals?
All right, yeah, briefly, however, I would like to take, if we could just have a couple minutes for myself and Adam to confer.
Sure. Why don't you step out for that? And I'm going to ask the zoning board of appeals members, after the city has asked their questions, if there are any other questions you may have of Ms. Olson. Are there other photos you want us to look at?
Um, let me see. I can do.
Yeah, I agree.
Who's your older person?
Mine, um, Makira. I've been in contact with her going back and forth. And prior to that was Heidi. So I was going back and forth with Heidi about when we were doing this stuff on 400. So I've been very in contact with everybody because, well, I'm advocating, I advocate for home occupation.
Just wondering, your packet mentions Vincent and that is company. But I was wondering who the city, city had up there.
I have an item here that my, or that the person that's been putting in most of the complaints asked me to make for him too.
Well, look.
But it is a laser X1, so it's just some more laser pictures. Oh, here's the, here's the blackening, here's blacking that is put on there. But I do, I might.
No, let's, no, if the city's not here, let's wait.
So these are the other decorations that you do?
Yeah, it's a black printer that you can just print right onto the wood. It's called a direct, direct to garment or direct printing.
Okay.
Okay.
But I can only print on the flat surfaces. And it, it prints, I specifically got that printer because it can handle the height of a finished item.
Okay, wait, please, please.
Sure. Oh, come on up. You're on, you're on camera and you're on tape.
Yeah, your appeal, huh?
I know, but I was just saying
No, ma'am, please. You're okay. Ma'am, you're not supposed to be presenting now because the city is not here. Please, wait.
Yeah, John and I graduated. She's Chicago.
No, they're not.
All right, I understand, Mr. Beveridge, that you would have some questions of Ms. Olson as part of the proceeding.
Yeah, just got a handful. You mentioned early on that rent stinks, and you thought about the idea of a, some sort of tax write-off for the costs involved with these additions at your home. Did you in fact actually apply for or file for any sort of tax advantage based on those costs?
Not yet.
Are you intending to do so?
If my accountant says to.
Tom, do you have any sense of what types of representations you need to make to the IRS regarding the use of that space in order to deal with that?
Yes.
Can you describe those to us?
It has to be for business use only for that portion of that space. You cannot be having personal items in that space when you're writing it off.
So is it correct to say that every product sold at least passes through either the 410 or 400 Franklin Street property?
Um, no, if something will just be going blank and not customized, it would then, it can then be shipped directly from the girls when they're done with it.
Could you estimate a percentage of your total sales that are blank on customized products?
Probably only about two percent.
And do you have, have any, any current use of the 400 Franklin property involved with the business at all?
There is, just because my flooring is taking up space within the house because it needs to be installed. Anything that is in 400, if requested or if asked, I would then just move my flooring that's, that's in the process of being installed over to that house and have enough space in the current space to put it in there. So if requested, I could put everything in there. But that house is mostly full of all the stuff that my sister wanted from my grandmother's house when they were clearing out my grandmother's house, and my cabinets for my kitchen, and the items that would, I would personally typically have in my current house.
And just to be clear, nobody is currently residing in the 400 Franklin Street property?
No.
How many, we heard a reference to sort of the total number of transactions in the history of the business. How many transactions would you estimate that currently you have per year?
Per year? It varies because this, because of COVID, I went down to, at the beginning of two, 2020, I didn't even know if I was going to be able to survive because stuff dropped so low. And then suddenly, everything picked up because everybody was shipping a ton of stuff because they couldn't see each other, so then I had one of my best years ever. And then this year now, I'm down about forty percent over those past two years. So it varies between, I can actually... I've only been selling on Etsy. I have not been selling elsewhere, and I haven't done any off-site sales for the past two years off, or no, I think I did two sales not on Etsy. So if I look at this year so far, there's been 2,941 orders. And that's 28% down right there from the previous year, and I'm, and it's been a steady going down. It was still fine at the beginning of the year, and month by month by month, it's been going down and getting less than the previous two years. So right now I'm at 2018 levels, I think, or last July, June and July this year were back to how I was at 2018. So a lot less. And most of my sales did occur, like I had a significant jump to that thirty, or thirty-five thousand sales, I think, now on Etsy. The majority of those happened during that COVID spike.
Okay, so you said you've had 2,941 orders so far this year. How many, how many items are there in the state average order?
One is the average. If, if I went and averaged it completely out, maybe 1.2 or something like that. Most orders are for one item. On rare occasion, like last week, I had two orders that were for more than one item. This week so far, I guess it would only be, no, I have zero this week so far that are for more than one item. I do have a couple that are late that had like three items.
So you touched on this earlier. Am I correct to say that the biggest pulse of sales you have, you said it's in November, December, holidays, right? So you're at 2,941 orders here on the cusp of September, and you're still waiting to have your busiest time of year, correct?
Yep, that's not that.
Okay. What's your yearly revenue from that, and what type of margin do you have on that revenue?
It varies, but why is that relevant?
Well, if you're objecting to the question, which is what I understand that you're doing, we've been talking a great deal about the business, and you've talked a great deal about the services and the orders that you've had. I'm going to rule that that is a relevant question for him to ask of you because of the testimony that has been given thus far about the sales you've had. I'm not sure I characterize it yet as a business, but that maybe is for later discussion.
Well, okay, so I have to answer that then, but can I also say that one artist might sell something for $10,000, one item? So why would it be relevant for me to say how much money I'm bringing in? Because one artist could make as much as me by selling
I understand that, ma'am.
Okay.
We're here to consider whether or not the things that you do at your location are a hop, a acceptable home occupation or a business that needs to be in a commercial location.
Okay.
I have determined that that's appropriate a question.
Okay.
If you want to refuse to answer it, the Zoning Board of Appeals will take that into consideration.
I'm not going to. I'll try.
Well, then don't ask more questions. Answer the question, please.
Okay, it varies within the last three to four years. It's varying between about 300,000 to 500,000. You have to figure that every single item that ships out, it costs anywhere between, the much, or the majority of the items cost about $12 to ship out, if not more. So that cuts down a lot into how much you actually make at the end of the day. So I have my lumber costs which skyrocketed. So one, like lumber skyrocketed. I didn't change my prices because I was still trying to, I was trying to be nice to my customers because everybody's in a pinch. And also Etsy takes now up to 27% of every sale in fees and that.
I got a question.
Okay, let's wait a minute. Let, let the city finish and then we'll get to that.
Did I answer everything that you wanted to know there?
I, I guess the only thing there was, I, I asked you about the margin, and, you know, obviously, I mean, you've, you've said that that has been variable, that there's some things that have cut in your margin in the, in the most recent year here. But, I mean, I mean, we talked 20%, 50%, 80%.
It varies now between 30 to 50% is what I would say. But 50% is on some smaller items. But then, like, so a bottle opener, I'll sell any, or, some of them actually are negative too because it's items that are, people don't actually want like rustic stuff, so I sell anything. They think they like rustic, but they expect something different. So I will sell items pretty much just to get them off the shelf at no profit because otherwise I have no use for them. So some of the bottle openers, I have extra rustic ones that might sell for $16. The shipping for one of those smaller ones is about $6. So that leaves $10, and then plus the cost of wood, plus going back and forth all the time that we do, taking stuff out to the girls, bringing it back because we have to do that transportation ourselves. And then paying, Felts Manufacturing, they charge anywhere between 27 cents per foot to process, linear foot. So to process lumber on, down, so it ranges from 11 cents to 21, 20, 21 or 27 cents per linear foot for them to process the lumber.
So to sum up, in my, in my fairly characterizing would say about $300,000 to $500,000 a year in revenue with a margin of somewhere between 30 and 50%.
Probably yes. And right now, it would be on the lower, I'd say on the lower end because of how much everything else's cost. Shipping will be over, it's over $100,000 a year shipping just costs. It stinks.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Um, I think it was just answered, but, so three to 400,000, what, how much is your actual take on what you can't write off? I mean, I don't know if it's relevant, but it seems to be a focusing point, so I think it's
I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I'm late on my taxes, period. It's been a mess because I've been so stressed out by everything else going on.
I think someone else had a question?
Well, it was along the same lines. It seems, it, it doesn't seem like you're anywhere close to 50%. It seems like it's less than that.
That used to be.
With, I mean, so you, you have three to 400,000, and then 100,000 of it is shipping. I know lumber costs are crazy because I'm trying to do some construction on my home. So I, I just feel like your overall gain is very small.
Yes, it's gone down a ton.
I'm sorry that it's done that, but I, just for, you're not making a ton of money doing this.
No. And it stinks because, well, I put most of the money towards the garage and towards renovations, so.
And I, I had done a little bit of research prior, prior to this about what Small Business Administration could have considered a small business. I just wanted to make sure you were within those numbers and stuff like that, and obviously the employees aren't a factor. So I appreciate your answers.
My golden retriever is really expensive. He's a loss.
Other questions from the Board of Appeals?
I have a question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. Where, where is this located?
That's in the garage.
This is in the, the garage which is attached to the house?
It's attached to the house.
And that's the big building in back of the house?
Yes, it's to the left when you're looking at the house. So if you calculate it out, the percentage of the business, or the percentage of the house that I use for business, the calculations that the city presented in this packet are completely inaccurate and wrong because it's missing 200 and some square feet of finished, or of, was it habitable space? And also, when the math was done, it was based on the garage being detached and inhabitable, and they took the inhabitable amount divided by the habitable amount to get a total. But if you're doing that, that means that this was never had a chance to be habitable. So you're taking, on, like, it should have been added in. So if you add in the 224 square feet that the city unfortunately forgot in my, when they did the assessment, they forgot to add that in on the second floor of the house. I didn't report it because I was hoping, well, my taxes will go up, so I just left it be. They'd figure it out when they come around next time. But they left that out, and then also, when you add that in, plus you add in the amount of the garage minus the chunk of the garage that's not being used because that's where the pipes and everything are for the boiler that heats the garage, you end up at about, I think it was less than 20, it's less than whatever the amount they have in there that has to be for considered and accessory, or not the primary use of the property. So, and it was the term.
Again, any questions from the board? I, Ms. Olson, unless you have something new you want to tell us right now, I'd like to move to the city and have them present their information, and then I'm going to give you an opportunity to give a final statement to the board.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, so am I going to be able to comment on the things that they put in here that are inaccurate?
That's part of, that's going to be part of your cross-examination, although I will probably just let you comment on this stuff. Is there anything new you want to give to the Zoning Board of Appeals right now before we move to the city?
I guess my biggest thing is, is would have this been an issue if it was not for the fact that it is wood? If they were just ordering tons and tons of glassware or water bottles and doing the work at their house, would that be an issue? Or should I really switch over to water bottles, and then would it be fine? And if it would be fine if I'm buying pre-made water bottles from another company, or would it be fine if I did some of the laser etching at my house? it be fine if I did some of the laser etching at my house, but then had somebody else that did the rest of it for me, so I subcontracted that out, would that be the issue? Because I could be one of those people that does nothing at their house and fully just dropships from another company. So then the amount of revenue would not make, would shouldn't really matter, even if I do have my business from my home, but I do not do any work there because I dropship everything by another company. But my company would still be at home then. That's one of those things, like where, if I was not doing lumber there, would this have even been brought up as an issue?
Well, ma'am, we're not here to answer your questions.
Okay.
So you've made whatever point you want to make with that?
Yeah.
I'm now going to ask the city to present their position regarding this matter and then we'll finalize our positions.
Absolutely. Thank you Attorney Dietrich and thank you members of the board for your time this evening.
And Attorney Beveridge, you're going to let Adam make the presentation and then you'll have an opportunity at the end, right?
That's correct.
Go ahead.
I will ask if the chair, I do have a presentation, I'll give you some cues if that's all right with Attorney Dietrich to jump to the next slide. You go down four slides or five slides. That one, yes. All right, so what I want to start out this evening is talking about plainly what is a home occupation? So generally defined, a home occupation is the use of a dwelling or an accessory building for a specific commercial activity. Now, communities all across the country have varying degrees of regulations within their home occupation ordinance. Here in the city Stevens Point, we have our own set of standards, which I'll be talking about a little bit later on. Now, home occupations are, and professional offices are lumped together in terms of what type of commercial use that it deals. So examples of home occupations, as mentioned on the screen, includes baking, dressing, health home services. Examples of professional offices include spaces for occupants, architects, interior designers, dentists, photographers. And there are some common parallels that you see with those types of home occupations, those types of office-type settings. Generally, you use a very limited space. Generally, if it's a spare bedroom, you've seen a lot of that over the last couple of years, beginning at the onset of COVID. You know, a case of a baker using their existing kitchen to take care of that type of commercial use. Contrast that with what you can see on the next slide. The applicant did provide some examples of the types of products, finished products that are produced on site. These are some examples taken from Ms. Olson's business website, etsy.com, that she mentioned. So take a look at these types of products and imagine the amount of labor, imagine the amount of detail that is involved with producing these types of finished products. Naturally, I mean, they look beautiful. I mean, not going to lie, it takes a lot of time however to etch it and to present that type of design that's shown there. And one thing before I go on to the next slide where I want to talk about, and this is what Attorney Beveridge just mentioned, the quantity of finished products, products that are being produced. The applicant in discussion with the city did state a specific number of finished products produced per year, and that number being 10,000. 10,000 finished products produced each year, that comes up to be approximately 833 finished products produced per month, 192 finished products produced per week, and 27 finished products produced each and every day.
Excuse me, Adam, I am not going to interrupt you again, I promise that.
Sure.
But my understanding is now most of this production is not done at this location.
The finished product as in the etching and the subsequent packaging and sending out of those products.
But the building, but the building of the, putting the four pieces together.
Correct.
Is not done at this facility.
Correct. What I mean by finished products as in this product once is 100% complete, in this case, what's bringing these products to 100% completion is the etching that's being conducted on this site.
I'm not going to interrupt anymore, I just needed to get that out.
Sure. So if we go on to the next slide, Chair, really the heart of this is how does the city zoning code articulate our home occupation requirements? So the image on the left is the chunk taken right from our zoning code and that's a big block of text. So what I'm going to do just very briefly is summarize each of the seven requirements as part of our home occupation requirements. First of which being that the person who carries out the home-based business must reside on the property. You can't have a lot being utilized for a home-based business that's not being occupied by anybody, that's not happening. Second, the residential use of the property must be primary and the commercial use must be incidental to that residential use. More on what incidental means will come a little bit later. Three, the building cannot be modified externally to accommodate the commercial use. Fourth, the commercial use cannot induce a smidgen of traffic, noise, dust, et cetera, over and above that is already present in the neighborhood. Essentially going at, will the home-based business impacted here or there? Number five, only a reasonable amount of stock of, a stock or a business being ran out of the household is on site at any given time. Entire rooms filled with goods for sale, garages stacked full of boxes of goods or goods cluttering spaces otherwise used for residential purposes would not be allowed. Six, one may employ only one person other than the immediate family members who reside on the property to work, to work on the residential property as part of this home-based business. And then lastly, there are some specific uses that are explicitly called out and not being permitted of a home-based business. So go on to the next slide, Chair. Really, there's two items that I want to address about in relation to our home occupation requirements, the first of which being, quote, is the home occupation of the applicant incidental to the use of a premise for residential purposes? If you go on to the next slide, what I want to start out is really defining what the word incidental is. Now, our zoning code unfortunately does not provide a definition for what incidental means. Now, it is common practice in ordinance interpretation and ordinance administration that if a word is not defined in that specific correspondence, you use a common dictionary to outline, to really define what that word is. So using Webster's dictionary provides two different definitions for the word incidental. First of which being that, quote, is, that, quote, occurring or apt to occur in a unpredictable or minor component, is that right? And then secondly, quote, of a minor, casual, or sub, of or subordinate nature. And that's really the key there, minor, casual, subordinate nature. So go on to the next slide, there's a couple items that I want to highlight in relation to my argument as to why the applicant's business does not align with our home-based business requirements, and the first of which is the space that is utilized. Now, as I mentioned, we, city zoning code is not defined what the word incidental is. And unfortunately, there is not a threshold that says if you haul over X percent, X number, any given number, that business is not, is not in alignment with our home occupation ordinance and in turn will be considered a permitted use. Now, thankfully, one of the, one, example of laws that govern the property that do provide specifics as to what that threshold is, is the Wisconsin Building Code. And you see the first two chunks of verbiage talks about specifics for operating a one or two family dwelling and really subsection B is of note, is that a one or two family dwelling cannot have more than 25 of the, 25% of the habitable floor area of the dwelling unit being utilized as a home occupation. Next section outlined just some specifics of what is considered a habitable. Now, how you calculate this, and this was confirmed through plan reviewers from the Wisconsin Department of Safety and Protective Services, how you define, how you determine that threshold is simple fraction, numerator being the total square footage that is being used as part of that home occupation, and that includes spaces that hold habitable and not habitable, the denominator being the total square footage of habitable floor space that exists within the dwelling. So this would include certain items, as mentioned above, closets, pantries, restrooms, et cetera. The percentage comes up, as you can see, is significantly over 25%. So what does that mean? This means that per the Wisconsin Building Code, the use, the commercial use on the property is not considered a home-based business, is considered a full-fledged commercial endeavor, which is in turn subject to commercial building code requirements. And those requirements I'll mention a little bit later in my testimony. Next slide, please, Chair. I want to talk first about the progression of Ms. Olson's business or really any home-based business for that. And running the business is tough. I haven't had any experience running the business, but I could only imagine how much blood, sweat and tears it does take to get a business up and off the ground. And with a little bit of time, a little bit of luck, that business flourishes. There's a crescendo effect. You see more and more products being produced, more and more sales happening. There's more sales, more products being produced, say in a year five than a year one, for example. And that's the case that we saw here in Ms. Olson's business. She, as she, and as she mentioned earlier, the home-based business started in 2013. Then minimal amount of product that's being produced, minimal amount of sales, but there's that crescendo effect. Naturally, as that business grew larger, it came to the realization even of the applicant that the space in the dwelling, in her dwelling, does not fit her business plan, it's too small, using the exact quotes stated by the applicant, quote, "I need a space to spread out in," quote, "I don't like working in the basement and garage," quote, "I outgrown my previous startup space for three years." As the applicant mentioned, from 2018 to 2020, she did relocate her business from her home to a commercial tenant space, zone B four would be considered a permitted use within our zoning code. And before I touch any further, I want to talk a little bit about just the progression of a business relative to the new standards in our zoning code. If, in this example, a home-based business grows larger, larger and larger, wants to relocate to a commercial tenant space, more often than not, there would not be much restrictions in our zoning code. It'd be either a permitted use by right in our commercial and industrial zoning districts or in happenstance may need to get a conditional use to be and have that be considered by our plan which is a common policy. Now, let's revert the opposite way. Imagine you have a commercial use that wants to relocate back into a residence, say a auto repair shop. Imagine a auto repair shop, a Skid Mees for that matter, wanting to relocate that scale of a repair shop from a commercial site into the confines of a residential branch. Of course, the size and scale is going to be different, but the fact of the matter is our zoning code would have some clear prohibitions on that just based off of how our zoning code is structured, what uses are permitted and conditional prohibited in our zoning, in our zoning code. And as the applicant mentioned, in the latter half of 2020, she did relocate her business back from, from the commercial tenant space located off of Turf Street, back to her residential dwelling. And it comes at no surprise, given the findings of fact that I just mentioned, that not that long afterwards is when the, is when the city first became aware of concerns from the neighborhood regarding this planned home-based business. All right, so if you go on to the next slide, and this is what, no, this slide actually, and this is what I already highlighted, the number of products produced per year. And really my question is, is a creation of these many products minor or or subordinate in nature? 10,000 products produced each year, 27 finished products sent out for delivery each and every day. Next slide, Chair. We'll go to wholesale production. Now wholesale, the word wholesale again is not defined in our zoning code using a dictionary. You have the three different types of definitions that were included in Webster's dictionary, for example, sold in large bulk or quantity, usually at a lower cost. Now, the three images that you see on the right-hand side of the screen are exact quotes, are exact excerpts taken from Ms. Olson's business, off the business website, etsy.com, social media platforms, explicitly advertising and promoting the wholesale production of her products. And my question for you all is, can a home-based business be both incidental in nature, but in turn allow for the production of goods in large quantities? In my opinion, those, those contradict each other, right? Being incidental is supposed to be minor, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be subordinate in nature. But in contrast, you're allowed to produce products at the mass scale and publicly advertise as such. Next slide, Chair. Second item, I wanted to talk about the change in the characteristics of the neighborhood. So there's three items I'd want to pull out, talk about briefly, first of which is building code requirements. So as I mentioned, the state building code would classify the applicant's dwelling as a, the applicant's business as a commercial endeavor, not a home-based business. So if you go on to the next slide, Chair, really what does that entail? What type of building code requirement will need to be met as part of occupying this type of use in the residence, disregarding even what our zoning code says for that? And there's two really, two key, two key points that I want to raise, first of which firewall separation, essentially separating the areas that are used for the business from the area that is used for residential purposes. And the second of which being the areas that have, that are used as a business, they have to be smart. Why is that important? Why is that necessary in the state of the context of this appeal? Taken directly from our zoning code, chapter 23, sub 1, sub 4, the purpose and purpose statement, what's our intent as a zoning, for our zoning code, one of which being secure safety from fire. Sprinklers serve reason, firewall separation serves a purpose to eliminate or at the very least reduce or prolong the event of a fire taking place so any person having in the residence can get out safely should there be a fire that takes place. Next slide, please, Chair. First I want to talk, and this I want to talk about is traffic. So knowing that 10,000 finished products are produced per year, you know, how is wood delivered onto the, deliver to a residence and how often are final products shipped out? And the applicant did provide some details in her testimony, so I'm not going to speak about that for the sake of time. One item that I really, that I did want to mention though, is that the applicant claimed in her testimony that there's no deliveries that are provided, or there's no deliveries to the site or her home-based business. I have two items that I can share with, for Attorney Dietrich's approval, the first of which is an email from the applicant to myself, Attorney Beveridge, dated August 10th, 2022, so about a little over two weeks ago, telling staff that...
Right, okay, hold it. Go ahead.
Can I object to that?
Sure you can. What's your objection?
Um, I object to it because I just stated that I have two box, cardboard box orders per year for the business being delivered typically. I had just said that tonight. And I do have it in emails and I did print out the email from, might have been from last week, that I emailed the city to let them know that this is, I, today, or today, or tomorrow, I'm going to be having my first cardboard or box order of the year as a heads up. So if any complaints are being put in regarding that, I am contacting you prior to it. And I also took a picture of the truck doing the delivery and not blocking traffic.
And the, the email you're referencing relates to this box pickup or this box delivery?
From Uline, correct. Essentially, the materials that are used for delivery, the email that I have here references what the applicant mentioned and then subsequently on August 11th is when the delivery... what the applicant mentioned, and then subsequently on August 11th is when the delivery took place, and I have the picture taken from myself, take my beam showing the delivery truck. So I happened to actually be blocking the sidewalk and part of the roadway, but delivering the products for Uline to the applicant's residence. And that's something that if, I don't know if you wanted Attorney Dietrich to pass around or if that's-
I want to hear from Ms. Olson first.
I, oh, I did already send around a photo of that delivery where my next-door neighbor's truck is sticking out further into the road than this truck was. That was one of the photos in there.
I don't recall seeing that photo, but, do the board members recall that? Okay. Then, yeah, this can be passed around. I, I think, Ms. Olson, you're, you're, you agree that this is an email that you sent, from what I gather here?
If it was one that recently occurred, yes. And, and there are tons and tons of emails with the city where I state how many deliveries I have per year. And I have two, and that's why I sent around the photo showing all of the deliveries of insulation and other non-business-related things, including the one that has the flat thing in the road because that was damaged, and that was possibly blocking the road when the delivery was made because, well, Forrest and Franklin were closed off, or it was, had the construction work. So he did park right there, he took it off, and he set that down, but that was a shower pan and nothing related to the business. So that could be anybody.
I, I, I'm going to accept those items into the record because she, the, Ms. Olson testified to them, and I don't think whatever you provided is the same as what she's testified to.
Next slide, Chair, just want to touch briefly on the pollution of byproduct. Thank you. So these are some images that were provided to city staff showing really the effects of the dust blowing into the neighborhood. As the board may recall, Ms. Olson did state that she leaves the overhead door of her attached garage open and blowers blowing the product out into the open. So you can see images such as dust clinging to the side of the, outside of the window, fencing, one left untreated. Obviously, dust and untreated wood do not mesh and result in fungus, mold, items like that.
Whose window is this?
That is the next-door neighbor to the east.
So it's not 400?
Correct.
Okay.
This would be showing the impact of the-
I understand what it shows.
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
That photo was taken and dated in the city's documents that they pulled for me for open records. That was taken the day after the derecho, when we had 70 miles per hour wind, and the street was all ripped up on Forrest. So that could be anything, and when that is, I think that is inside of that little building right there. But that is, if you have untreated materials being used to make, build that, then that would probably be molding from exposure, and that was not a permitted structure that was built onto the property, and I have photos of when that was being built too. But that's not related to me, but that, I don't see how anything could get over there because when that photo was taken, that exhaust right there was not next to the house. That was prior to the August when I had to move it. And that window is within that enclosed area that they have off the back of their house. I do have a photo showing the aerial view if anybody desires to look at it.
I, I would, I don't want you to look for it now because I want you to listen to what they're saying, but I would be good for you to find it.
All right, and just want to touch on closing arguments again for the sake of time. If you go on the next slide, Chair. So here's three bullet points. I'm actually going to add one, just since this was a conversation that was addressed earlier and knowing that I'll be asked, and that's really, how does city staff review permits? And I think one context that is being left out is, this is something that member Markham was alluded to, zoning is a spectrum, right? There is a land use permit, this is what, this is an instance where you would look at our use standards in each of our zoning districts. Single-family residential use, which zoning districts is that part of a review like that? Second, there's development reviews, and this would be focusing on setbacks, building height, lot area, density. And this is akin to variance requests that this board oversees. There is a difference between a use variance and an area variance. This has the same, same mold, the types of permits that are reviewed are different because zoning is a spectrum. But again, going back to what's shown on the screen, there's three claims that are being presented and then backed. And the first of which is claim being that city is targeting the applicant's home-based business and is disregarding other home occupations that are located, are located here in the city. And included in the agenda packet are two non-compliance notices that were sent to other home-based businesses in the city during the duration of this appeal. And there was actually a third one that was started about three or four weeks ago. So just want to make that point clear. Second claim is if the business is vacated from the dwelling, that there would be no reasonable use of the property left. And, you know, thankfully, there is sufficient case law that shows just that effect, that there's standards that have to be proven to show that if a use is not de-viable, that is not lawful, are there any reasonable use of the property? And in this case, the R3 zoning district, what are permitted uses, single-family residential uses, whitney, non-residential uses that are allowed by our right? And then lastly, as I mentioned, the use, or the characteristics of the property itself does not warrant any unique situations that would prohibit any reasonable use of the property. And then the last of which is, as far as a claim is concerned, is that home occupations which use equipment that is commonplace in a dwelling automatically makes that home-based business lawful. And what I'd like to stress for the board is that context is important. In my own garage, I have all the materials, all the equipment used to change the oil of my, for my chain rotate tires. The thing is, that's for personal use, or even if you, if I take care of that for a buddy of mine or two, that's minor. Conversely, if you do, imagine doing that for five vehicles each and every day, yes, you have the same equipment. That equipment is located in the house irregardless of, of the intensity of the use, but the intensity, the context is the key. And I think that's something that the applicant didn't mention in her application that is important to understand, is that context is everything. How many finished products are being produced per year, the wholesale production, the amount of revenue that is generated, the location, the fact that the location of this home-based business used to reside in a commercial tenant space and then relocated back into a residential dwelling. Context is important. So with that, I'll rest my case, and I'll actually defer to Attorney Beveridge for any additional ideas.
Yeah, I do want to go through three things here, starting again with the incidental standard. And Adam's absolutely correct to point out that that's not a, a term that's defined in depth within the code. It's a, it's a qualitative standard, and it takes into account the totality of the circumstances. It's similar to when you see the word reasonable appear in a statute or a rule. Now, I'm, I'm sure at the start of the business in 2013, there was probably absolutely no doubt that it was incidental to the use of the property as a residential structure. But businesses grow, and scale is important. We, we heard a statement from Ms. Olson earlier that her shipping bill is up into six figures, meaning a commercial operation with a six-figure shipping bill. I don't know if there's any characterization of incidental that that fits within. But despite all odds, there's actually a Supreme Court precedent in the state of Wisconsin that is remarkably on point for this exact question. I'm going to distribute some copies of this. This is State Exrel A Heineck &amp; Sons Company versus Board of Appeals from the Wisconsin Supreme Court in 1954. I don't have absolutely enough copies for everyone. I do. I'd like to direct you to almost all of them have a red tab, you'll see a highlighted passage. Now, this case was about some folks who had a commercial space with a photography studio, and they relocated most of what was going on in the photography studio to their house. If you look at the highlighted portion, I'll read it aloud so we have it in record here, says, "The evidence showed the appellant, Mr. and Mrs. Kruzienski, expected to move much of their equipment of their commercial studio to the, to the residence and to conduct there the picture-taking part of their photography business. It appears to us that the term of, quote, 'home occupation' requires considerable stretching to make it applicable to an established business which has simply moved from a commercial neighborhood to a residential one. There to be conducted in a part of the structure designed for that purpose alone and not for living quarters, although the remainder of the building is designed and will be used for a residence." And if you go back to the page just prior to that, page three, sort of towards the lower right of the page, there's a paragraph that says, Section 16.04, Sub 18, Home Occupation. You read through there, you'll see despite this being from the 1950s, that same word, incidental, incidental to residential use. So the court here was evaluating this through the same linguistic lens that our code adopts and that we're asking you to examine here today. And, and I think, you know, based on the highlighted portion, it, this case, it would be difficult for it to be much more on point. We have heard evidence today that the business used to be located in the long quarters building. Around that same time, here, I should reference another one of the standards here, in the packet that was provided on page 12, you have the seven standards there, I'll give you a moment to look to that. Again, I said it's page 12. Page 12 of the total packet, the lowest page number. And standard three there says, "The building cannot be modified externally to accommodate the commercial use." Now, just a couple pages after that, on page 15, you'll see the Instagram post from Reimagine Brewing in March 2018, and it shows some nearly finished products stacked in a room. And it says, "When your work invades your home, lots of wood, wine caddies, pine class totes, and condiment caddies waiting to get business logos handcrafted by Reimagine Brewing, link to shop in bio, I think I need a bigger workshop." Well, we saw the photos of the addition that's been built at the 410 Franklin Street property, and it's clearly quite a modification to the exterior of the home. And we've seen photos that indicate that there's a lot of racking in the, the back part of the first floor for, for product. There's a lot of space to do work in there. And it appears that that is more or less dedicated to the business solely. In fact, we even heard a testimony from Ms. Olson that she's evaluating eligibility for the tax write-off with regards to that, to that expense. But I think it's, it's certainly not unfair to characterize this as having been a external modification of the building to accommodate the commercial use. Now lastly, we heard some, some comments from Ms. Olson about communications, both verbal and email, with some former city staff, Michael Strowski and Kyle Kearns, in which they indicated to her that what she was intending to do would be allowed. Now, we did hear from Adam at the end of his presentation about the difference between different types of zoning approvals. We saw the application for the garage build, and it was done in order to ensure that it was in compliance with setbacks, height, those area standards. That application didn't contain any information about the use of the garage. But she does seem to suggest that if these communications were made to her, that somehow she should be allowed to use the property in that way. Now, if you recall, the presentation I made to this body a few months ago, I just, I discussed the concept of a stop, i.e. the idea that if certain things happen, certain communications happen in the past, that a city government can become prohibited from then enforcing the zoning code in the future. And a stop does not apply to these types of situations. So we haven't actually seen any evidence here today of what those representations were. But even if we assume that at some point in some verbal conversation, it was said, yes, you could operate a business over there, that wouldn't prohibit the enforcement of the zoning code now. But also, when I mentioned at the beginning, talking about incidental, businesses change, they grow. And as they grow in scale, you can go from something that's incidental to something that is clearly not incidental. So whatever the description of the scale of the business was, would certainly be relevant to the impact of any of those types of statements. And that is all. Thank you for your time.
Can I, just to clarify, my understanding is that the addition, the garage and all of the addition that's related to the garage was, did meet appropriate zoning requirements for setback and everything else?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's something I want to, if I could just add here, if that's okay?
No, I don't think that's okay.
Okay, okay.
And the reason I don't think it's okay is because I think first, we should afford Ms. Olson the opportunity to either ask them questions, or I think it would, if it would be easier for you, you mentioned that a number of the items in their report were inaccurate or mischaracterized things. Do you want to just walk through that report and tell us that?
Mm-hmm. Or, okay, when would you like me to provide the photos of the next-door neighbor's backyard and where the windows and things are? Oh, actually, I did, I did make an error, I'm sorry. I thought that window was within that little addition that they have there. It isn't, I'm not sure where that one is. But I do know that they do make it look like their windows are open to, and make claims that were reported, that dust is blowing in their windows, but they never have the windows open on their house. But they do have, even in the winter, they left or forgot about that they left their storm window open a little bit. So they have the interior window closed, that glass storm window up about this high so that it looks like the window is open all the time, and then making claims that stuff is blowing in even though it couldn't because that window's in the front and the, everything's way in the back left, opposite side of the house.
I'm going to let you pass that material around. I'm not sure I see the relevancy to the zoning board of appeals. I'm not sure I see all the relevancy of it, but we'll let it be passed around as appropriate.
When Adam said that the fence was not sealed, it is sealed. I have a photo and a text message that I sent my next-door neighbor when they were doing the ceiling, and then that's when they were building, being the new addition on the back, and actually, the concrete truck was on city or city-owned property, and that two for that, and a guy got his face hit with that concrete truck on, yeah, okay. But, um, yes, I'll go through it.
If you want to go through the report-
Yeah.
-and provide information to the zoning board of appeals, please do so, and please focus.
Sorry, I'm a bit ADHD. Okay, so when we're looking at this, like on page two, when the case-
Page, page two of 111 or?
One, two of 18.
Can we go to the bottom of page numbers?
Yeah.
Oh, does it have, two of 18, yeah.
Which is, which is eight of 111.
Oh, sorry.
Correct.
Is it, how many off is it?
Do you have this packet?
I have it. Um, which one? Yes, on the bottom corner, it says-
Aerial of 400 and 410 Franklin?
Yeah, on my bottom right corner, it says two of 18.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, um, they have the definition right there, and then, and, but that's from 19, or that's when the case was, was in, oh, I can't use that one, I'm sorry, I marked this one off. But thank you.
If you want to use it to correspond to the patient or something. If you want to use it to correspond with the patient or something.
He's just saying there's two of, two of 18.
Yes, but I'm going-
Little packet.
Go ahead.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't use, I can't use both because then I'm going back and forth, and I'm already going to be flustered enough. So, it's looking back at a case that occurred in 1926. We already just recently saw what can happen when something in 1973 is thrown out and what it can do to everybody. But then, this also, the second part of this, it says historically been carried out within the home. And then, this document is from 1953, and that's probably why it says customary home occupations include, but not limited to, doctor, lawyer professions and feminine occupations such as dressmaking. And it goes on to say other things in there, and then it defines the incidental to the use of the premises of the residence. And I found something where this case actually, and that document that we all have in, what is it? In Exhibit A, has been gone through to show how different cities at that point in time interpreted it. This document shows pretty much how all these different cities interpreted things, like they took in things such as for, why, it says in here, some of the, let's see. "Some persons may find it desirable or necessary to carry an occupation in their home either as supplemental to a regular occupation or because the home is more practical place in which to operate." For me personally, it's a more practical place for me to operate because I have insomnia, and I could be up at any random hours because that's, if I'm sleeping or if I'm not, and also because I'm a workaholic. What I didn't mention is that multiple times during the time that I've had my business going, I was also working 40 hours a week at different jobs because I was workaholic. And in previous positions that I have had, like I was doing product management for metal gaskets and doing market research for a market research company and things like that, one of the companies made the error of putting me as non-exempt, and I was doing about 73 hours a week because I just, I have to keep going. I don't stop very well.
Okay, but what you do for other businesses-
But for that, yes, but that is-
Are not relevant here.
But that is something where if people are saying, how can you do this much work, or how can you do this? It's efficiency too. How efficient can somebody be?
I consider that part of your argument and part of your closure on this. I believe you said to us that there were inaccuracies-
Okay.
...in the document, and I would-
You want me to focus on it?
...like it to be kept to more factual things, please.
Okay, well, this print, this document right here goes and looks at your zoning, the, this, that was-
Are you submitting that as an exhibit?
Yes, I am. I'm going to be, I'll submit it because this is what was in the packet, and it does talk about the natural death and non-conforming uses. But if something, this was a, like, this was approved. I would have built the garage differently had it not been approved. I moved the business out specifically because I was building the garage. That's the only reason why it moved out, and the garage, I could have just stayed working out of a basement.
Moved, moved out of your basement and into the garage.
Yes. But when I moved out to the commercial location, I really didn't have to move out. I can make, I can change things up. That's how you do business. Businesses change and grow, and also, they can contract too. Maybe you become more efficient doing one thing, so you start doing things different ways. So, that's how, like, when I moved back in from that commercial location, and I was actually doing less on-site, because I do no manufacturing on-site anymore. I did prior to moving to that commercial space. That commercial space was way too large for what I was doing. And also, when I came back, again, no manufacturing on-site. I don't have lumber delivered by any method.
Ma'am, could you, I, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
We need to keep this to the facts that you want to present. But I have to ask this question, ma'am. You said no lumber on-site.
No, I, sorry if I-
But I showed you that picture.
No, and I, I sent, I showed you-
You said that's from the garage.
I showed you a picture too.
There's a, I showed you the picture that you had rattled around that showed various pieces of lumber stacked on shelf units.
Those are, if it's stacked on shelving units, those are my lids before they're etched on.
He's talking about, he's talking about the bunks of lumber?
Oh, that bunk of lumber was flooring that's getting installed in my house.
I think.
If it's the one where I was in front of that wood, and the question was asked if I, I move them together, if it is this one?
This one right here.
That, this-
Is this wood that you use in your work?
Yes and no, because this right here is the wood flooring being installed in my house. This got delivered to my house, we went and picked it up.
Now, that's in your garage?
Yes, because it's getting installed, and that's also-
Inside the house?
Yes.
What about the other side?
These are the lids prior to getting etched on. So, I do not match up a box with a lid until after I etch on it because I classify them in specific ways. If one has, like, where the marks are, sometimes not, you can't etch over them because it becomes a black mark and somebody will complain. So, I have them all set up like this, and they're sorted by how the, how I can actually use them.
And you take those, and you put them with the laser, and you do the laser cutting?
Yes.
And is that what comes from your, the, the two Amish women?
Yes. It's a finished good, other than I customize on it.
But the top that you customize?
That's this right here.
Yeah. Does that come with what they present?
Yes, this is what they give me.
Okay, so, how much is there?
All, all I do is- It varies depending on where, like, it varies right now.
How much stock do you keep on-site? So, you're getting it from Felts Lumber, you're getting it from my Amish kids?
No, Felts Lumber, I, I get very, that's just the raw wood, or that's the raw materials. That we take out to the grills. We just have a little bit of emergency stock because when you're trying to plan for somebody else that's off-site and they have limited access to a phone, they have emergencies and run out of size because they aren't planning right, and then we end up having to take it out there. Versus Felts sometimes has taken over eight weeks to process some lumber.
Anyway, how much do you have on-site?
Oh, it'll, it'll vary probably between-
Fifty, 100, 200? You got 27 going out a day? 6,000 a year?
Yeah, no, it's probably more like 300 items to 400 items. They're stacked on shelves. However, 300 items to 400 items for me is larger than if it's somebody that is selling bracelets, so-
Irrelevant. What is in your house, what is in your garage?
It's prob, it's probably 400 items.
Yeah, unshelved.
And it's on shelves.
Okay. What else would you like to tell us about this statement?
Okay, well, here's this, and this is how different cities interpret things. So, if we are going, if we are going by how, if we're going by how this, where, point is interpreting this right now for how they're going, how they're doing-
Actually, ma'am, this zoning board of appeals has been asked to do the interpretation.
Okay, sorry then. So, if you look at that, that's how all these other different cities have taken what this document says. Our city didn't write anything out to interpret this document until now. They did not define anything in there. So, if we, or somebody like me, goes and asks them, can you please tell me what this means? And you ask them, they don't tell you. Like, I didn't know about the percentage of use until this packet came out. I asked them, what do you consider an accessory use? Silence. I wasn't told that. I asked them what they're considering manufacturing. Silence. Like, my emails, and they're in the packet too, when I've asked for those things, they were ignored, and they wouldn't give me a definition. Before the meeting that I had with Adam and Ryan, I said, in there, before we have this meeting, please tell me what your definitions are of manufacturing, accessory use, and then there's one other word in there.
Ma'am, what else, what else do you want to present to us about this statement?
Okay. Okay, also, in that document, actually, it talks about why professionals want to be working out of their homes, and it says that they have more prestigious degrees. And that many times, I have my undergraduate degree in biomedical photography, I have my MBA in marketing and sales and project management, I have my, almost a bachelor's of science, or almost a BSN, so Bachelor's of Science of Nursing, and almost a second master's in hospital administration. So, I consider myself somebody that would then be of higher, like, of higher profession or of, that I would want to be working for.
But just to clarify, those degrees are not used in the etching part of this business card?
They definitely are. Hundred and ten percent. If I did not have my MBA, I, I know marketing and sales. You know what, like-
No, ma'am, I said in the etching part.
Oh, in the etching part?
In the part where you're doing the etching in the residence.
Yes, because my bachelor's, the biomedical photography degree, that one actually, I had to take classes in 2D and 3D design, and you have a lot of photo editing there. So, all my photos that I have or take from my, or take in my house for my items that I have online, that's using those degrees. My marketing background and my sales background, all that stuff.
I didn't ask about that, ma'am. Let's go to the next thing you want to tell us here.
Okay, um, so, when we're talking about a lot of the professionals now, or home occupations use a different type of space typically than if you're using an office in your house. So, that's why people are using, like, they're doing, that's why we passed the ADU, ACU, so that people could actually be working in a separate unit from their house. But mine is within my house. So, my, pretty much, I'm working from home, but it is not commercial. Even though the city just presented that it was commercial because I'm using too much of my house, that is not accurate. Because they did not, like, they did not consider the fact that there is 224 square feet in my house, again, that was not there. Where's my math? I can get it down to less than 25%. And if I needed to, I could just finish off part of my basement to increase that amount of space that is habitable, or that the city would consider habitable, to increase the square footage of habitable space in my house, to then take the amount of space that I'm using for my business, and I'm dividing it a smaller amount of, or the same amount of space into a larger number. Because when they got their percentage right there, it does not have the garage in it. They took the garage and then divided by the habitable square footage. Why is the garage not considered habitable square footage then? Because otherwise, it's like you got 10 out of 10 on your last test, you got 100 out of 100, or, no, you got 5 out of 10 on your last test in class, you got 100 out of 100 on this current test that you're looking at. But then, suddenly, you take that 10, 110 out of 200, if I said that, is a different number to get a percentage versus actually having that square footage in the first place and taking it out.
Okay, what else would you like to tell us, please?
I get, or when I do the math and I add in that 224 square feet, it ends up at, and take out where the spaces in the garage that's underneath the stairwell, I get below that 25%. Below that 25% means that it would not be considered commercial. So, when the, when the city had their professional person consulted, it even says in our documents that it, they did it based on the building, the garage not being attached to the house. So, that's why they did the math the way that they did, I think at least. But if it's attached to the house, they do not have any documentation in here how the math would then be done.
So, do you have a current blueprint that shows this 284 missing square feet?
Oh, that's on the, yeah, that's actually, it should be in the packet, they just did-
Saying the garage. It says it's attached, but garages are never considered habitable, same as the hallways aren't, the kitchen's not- The half, the upper half of the garage is supposedly habitable for like a mother-in-law or a father-in-law.
Yes, and then in the top-
Which will have its own toilet, she said. Okay. I didn't see, I didn't see the prints for that at all. I saw it in the rough sketch.
Okay, yes.
I think it's, I think it's page 65 of 111.
65.
65.
So, you're doing the math, you got a 24 by 36 garage, a two-story, cut in half. Where's your, you know, you got your habitable upstairs, garage space underneath it for the business. Maybe the city's got to do a little bit more math, but anyway, I'm just pointing that out. If it's not in there, you know, from a building permit, what the size of it is.
Yeah, and also, this is, this is what, these plans right here are what my architect should have submitted because I had-
Well, no, we, we can't- That's a should have.
Yeah, we can't be dealing with something that should have.
I found that out, okay, well, I found out that, or it just shows the line across the garage and where I had actually my laser.
Ma'am, we have to deal with what we have here, okay?
Okay, and SAW's indicated too, but I didn't, I found out that, I guess, maybe I should have looked at the final permit closer, but I didn't realize that until-
What else would you like to tell us?
Um, that a lot of things that people say online are not always fully accurate. So, when I am looking at something where I, when I post something on Etsy per se, or for example, we had, it states on there that I take on wholesale work. Anybody that is doing anything, wholesale can mean anything, because I have a bride buying three items, asking me for wholesale pricing. Everything is relative. I have not done a wholesale order, I think, in about two years because I decided that instead of taking those on, I was going to allow individuals from home being able to send gifts to people. Because if I took on a 100-item wholesale order, which takes me a lot less time because it's one single graphic, and I'll take less money to be able to do that, it's a lot less work. Instead, I was taking on more single-item orders where I have to do a different design for every single item to let those people go send things to other people. So, that's, that should be something considered. But it still goes into the number of sales. But that's why I have things like wholesale availability for most items. Ability does not mean I'm actually going to be doing that. That means that I have it there, if things are slow, maybe I'll want to try to fit it in. I also have that I, messages take a long time for responding to them. That is because I hate responding to customers because it takes me forever to write responses. And I also found that if anybody is asking me questions that they can answer by reading the listing, I really don't want them as a customer. But that, those are things that are inaccurate.
Okay, but what you decide about how you manage your business in responding to customers is important for you for purposes of your business, but it's not really important for is important for you for purposes of your business, but it's not really important for this.
Okay, so.
You made your point about you, what you currently do with wholesale orders.
Okay, so also, it was stated that are used as proof in here that I'm so busy that I can't even respond to messages. I have that posted because I really don't want to be responding to them, and I have flooring to install and I have other things to do in life. I, if it didn't, if, a message for me, as you can tell, I talk and, talk and I get sort of distracted. Writing emails for me to a customer is the same thing, it's going to take me a long time. I could have a personal assistant do it off-site, which would make my life easier, but I haven't, I wrote that instead.
Okay, what else would you like to tell us?
Um, that part of the, part of the stuff on the Etsy site was excluded, and I'm not sure why. Because they, in the policies, some of the things were submitted in this document, but other things weren't.
Were the other things, were, were the other things something that would be relevant to the discussions here?
Um, it has my shop members on it, where I have my secret elves, and I state here that they're the ones that are making things.
Again, I'm not sure that's relevant to the considerations. What else would you like to tell us?
The, that the example was used by the city of changing tires, that you couldn't have a shop and then have, have an auto shop and then have it move back to a residence either. But I have a neighbor that hired somebody to, and was like renting out their driveway to paint a vehicle on it. That's, and, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think.
Ma'am, just, just.
Yes, sorry.
If that's all you have to present.
No, it isn't.
We can, we can wrap it up.
I have this, I'm sorry. I did the square footage. So I made the point about incidental. And actually, the square footage in the house for the incidental part is three thousand one hundred and thirty-three square feet when you add everything up and then take out the total square footage of the garage. So if you take the seven hundred and eighty-four square feet of the garage, that's not including, or that is including the part underneath the stairs, that's not used, and divide that by three hun, three thousand one hundred and thirty-three square feet, you get right at twenty-five percent. But if I am not, in the end, using the entire garage, then that would change. Because right now, the way that things are, things are still just getting moved around because I've been in construction, unfortunately, for so long. I don't have a final total square footage that I will be using. But I can always change the amount of inventory that I have on site to be using lesser square footage. That's not a problem for me to be doing that. So I can stay under that to that, which would then classify it as an accessory use.
No, it would not, it simply would not follow that definition of commercial use.
No, I wouldn't, not commercial.
You've, you've discussed this, ma'am, you've discussed this with us. What else would you like to give, to present to us?
Um, I did state that in the photo of my Instagram, again, it's marketing. Those items ended up there because that was twenty-eighteen, that was a transition of when the boys were moving out of, to Missouri, I think, and the girls were starting up. They had messed up on those items, so they got set there in that room prior to getting moved out, and I think they were there very briefly. I posted that.
Referring to this page?
Yes. I posted that because it's good marketing. What somebody puts on Facebook or Instagram, it makes your, it's for your business, it's advertising, so that's why I had done that. But just because it's there does not mean that it's true completely.
What else would you like to provide to us, please?
Um, I also was, I guess that Logan might have cleared this up, but I was trying to figure out when, because my permits have been pulled, and what codes are we looking at? Because back in twenty-fifteen, I think, for, like, a photography studio, you had to get a conditional use permit. But now, he used the example of somebody going from a, out, from a photo studio that was off-site, moving a photo studio residential, that wasn't in point, but in point, you'd have to get a conditional use permit for that to be approved. But if that would have been approved, if it was in Stevens Point, and that would have been approved, that business could have moved from a commercial site back to a home.
But, I, I, what could have happened was something that wasn't in Stevens Point. Again, it's not particularly relevant to the proceedings.
Sorry. I would like to point out that the shortly that was used in the document, shortly after complaints started to occur, it took from September twenty-twenty until March twenty-twenty-one. And I'd like to point out, is six months of me being back home doing everything normal, is that really shortly? So, and that occurred right, that first complaint occurred right after I had indicated that I would not take down a birch tree in the backyard, and I had started dating somebody. So a complaint was put in that he was, because his truck was there, I'm guessing. Also, okay, did, oh.
We really need you to focus, ma'am, on things that would be relevant for the final consideration by the zoning board of appeals to determine whether or not your current operation would qualify as a home occupation. Not whether something is shortly or not shortly within so many months. Please.
I guess the, I guess many things that I use online, that the city is saying that, like, because I use the word manufacturing, and then they use the example of, or Webster's New College Dictionary's definition of manufacturing. I could not put manufacturing, I could instead write, the time that it takes between a customer placing their order and me to create the graphics to then put them on an item to ship, or, and then ship it out, is five to ten days. I could have put that, but manufacturing is a more commonly used term, and it's short and sweet. And when I'm limited by the number of characters that I can have within, on Etsy, I use shorter terms. So the terms that I use online should not be relevant.
What is the final statement you'd like to make to the board regarding your use of the property?
I would like, I would like to state too, that I have, because of all this, I have looked at another commercial site. And this started back in April, when I contacted Ryan for the first time about the building, and it is one one zero nine Second Street. And I actually, the city also left out, because I needed to give this to them, is that, the city left out when they were going through all my emails with Kyle Kearns for the zoning that I would be appropriate for, they left out his response to that, where it said that my business, if I was going to be moving to a commercial location, is B2.
What's the date on that?
This message from Kyle Kearns was nine twenty sixteen.
Six, twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, so I gave that to Ryan in April. I then, when I was sick, or right when I, before I got COVID, I called Mr. Beveridge right here to let him know that I had COVID and that I also felt like I, I didn't like the situation that had started to occur with the city because I was told in writing that unless I dropped my zoning, or my ZBA meeting, the city would not work with my uncle, whose, his LLC is purchasing, or trying to purchase, one zero zero nine Second Street right now.
Are you saying that you were threatened?
I either had, it felt like that, it felt like, even though.
That, that's not relevant to the determination we're trying to make. If you have a complaint about conduct of city officials, you should contact the police department about that.
Well, I was told that unless I dropped this case.
But you didn't drop this, and this case is now before zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board of appeals needs to decide whether or not the business that, I'm sorry, whether or not the activities that you're doing in your residence constitute a home occupation. That's what it is here for. So I'm asking you, do you have final statements you want to make to the zoning board of appeals about that issue?
Could I ask a question? Do you have another job right now, too?
No. I couldn't.
Okay.
I have no flooring, or I've been installing flooring, trying to get a house done, like.
It's okay, I just wonder.
What are the, what final statements would you like to make to the zoning board of appeals?
Um.
Alls you have to say is thank you.
I, no, I.
I, I have.
I do have one more que, one more statement, though, about how I felt like I was being targeted here. The two other zoning issues were both for lawn care businesses. So I would, when one of them also did not state what that person was doing, it just, again, says on there, hey, you're in violation of your zoning. These don't state what actually you're doing, you gotta cease your commercial operation out of your house. It's like, okay, well, could you let me know what I'm actually doing wrong? Because most of the people don't know. If those people had tons of equipment outside with their logos on, that then shouldn't be a home occupation because it, it, you can tell what it is from outside, but.
We need to focus on your business, please. What, a question from a board member.
Yeah, um, I was told to wait, so I still was holding on to those questions. So back to the twenty-five, twenty-five percent, right? And you had mentioned that you subtracted, um, subtracted spaces, closets, hallways. Um, and, and previously reading this packet, it had mentioned that you also subtracted the bathrooms and kitchen, is that correct?
Correct. Uh, areas that are not defined as habitable, that's mentioned on page, I don't have to look up. That's page seven of eighteen.
Okay, well, I, that's, that's, I guess I just needed to clarify on that. Now, you've listed those areas as not habitable, but knowing a little bit about the building code, would a home be habitable without those spaces?
A home, well, I've got a building inspector, so I can't speak to that, but, um, I'd rather not give it a thought.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm not here to argue, I'm, I'm just, um, I, I know for a fact, a home can't be habitable without running water, it can't be habitable without a kitchen, it can't be habitable. So I'm just trying to get an idea of why those areas were subtracted, and how much square footage those areas totaled, because.
You're not sleeping in your bathroom, you're not sleeping under your stairs.
But a home is not habitable without that space.
People don't, didn't have toilets and stuff.
But you cannot get a building permit without those spaces.
Times change, and stuff changes, I mean, businesses change, all this stuff is, is evolving all the time.
If there are any other questions for the applicant, please bring them forward, now this has gone on.
I have a question for.
You refuse yourself.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sorry.
If you go to page, who are you doing?
Yeah, I had, I had a short list here. You mentioned that the, um, part of the reason this needed to be moved to a commercial space was because of fire risk and additional work that would need to be done to mitigate fire risk. Is there an additional fire, a known additional fire risk with what she is doing?
Uh, known fire risk, known, no fire events that happened in the dwelling during the duration of the whole base business.
Is something, is something in her process abnormally prone to fire that, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, specifically in terms of, like, the equipment, I can't speak to that. The argument that I was making in the report is when a business that operates in a house exceeds a certain threshold in terms of space that's utilized, that triggers automatically improvements to the structure per the commercial building code, commercial building code.
One, one, one more question. So you, you carry everything to the post office, right? Do you use that little vehicle, or does someone else haul it, a trailer, or?
Yeah, or I, it fits in the back of my vehicle, or the back of his vehicle.
So, so the volume that you're doing fits in that little vehicle that we see in that picture, then?
Yes. It's a Honda Element, it's a little postal truck, it looks like one.
Yeah. If you go to, I was just wondering about page twelve of one one three. You pointed that, stated differently, number three. Now, is this in the city code, those seven points there?
So the seven points are summaries of that block of text directly above, so bottom of page eleven and here on the application.
So if we go back to, so this is not in the city code, this is like interpretation?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, but if you go back to page eleven of one one one, it says does not affect any substantial change. But you come here and it says cannot be modified. That's the difference there.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it would go back to how you define the word substantial, that's.
Yeah, but there can be a change.
As long as it's not substantial.
But bullet point three says what? Cannot be modified, so no change. So that's the difference in interpretation. So this interpretation does not confirm to what is in the code itself.
I wish I would ask you, is the building you saw in the photo a substantial change?
I know, I'm just.
Well, he didn't have to answer that, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get into back and forth.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what was interpreted, that it does not interpret correctly.
One last statement.
Well, it's, and to answer your question, I had to go.
No, he didn't ask you the question.
Okay, so I will then make a statement. Okay, so I will then make a statement that, when you go to the city to get a permit, because my, it is in the historic overlay, so you have your specific offsets. The city, when I went in there and talked to Michael and Kyle, had this been a new addition onto the house fully, and a garage had not already been there in the first place, it would, could have possibly been considered a substantial change, and then I would have had to go to common council to, to get approval for the reduced offsets to be able to build a two-story attached garage onto the property. However, because Kyle and Ryan determined that it wasn't, not enough of a substantial change, I was using pretty much the same footprint, it was just going back a couple feet, and it was going over the top of part of a back patio to make it so that it would, this is how it started out, and this is, and then this is what I, this is what was, I think, was submitted for the permit approval, because you have to do a site plan and submit that before you can get your permit approved. So this is what I submitted to the city, that it has a five-foot increase in depth to accommodate stairs to go upstairs, and two cars deep. So I designed it that if and when I wouldn't want my business in there, it would be, since it's only one single stall garage, the door currently is plywood, so it cannot be opened as some, as was stated by somebody else. That garage cannot be open, so, from the front, because it does not yet have a garage door on it. But when it does, I made sure that it would be two cars deep in there. And the city determined, because I did not ever want to have a flat roof ever again. The, the way the house was designed, it, the garage, and there's a back addition on the house, they both had a flat roof, those ended up leaking. So when I redid the garage, if you look, when you're looking at the photo of the house, I actually, and this is where the city forgot to put the extra 224 square feet, which, this was also submitted to the city too, where I wrote on here, the approved 36 by 24 garage addition, that I would be having a temporary tent or shelter during construction to protect materials, which that was only up for briefly during that storm. My 16 by 10 prefab shed was right there, and then the existing fences, and discussed change to the plans, extending garage roof over first floor to the first floor leaking. So that was where the plans came into play, where it, the whole front of the garage then would come down, so that the two lined up there, and then I wrote on it, bumping out, this is what I gave the architect, to bumping out to make the second floor bigger. So I ended up with a second floor over the first floor addition. So that was a change, but that was completely for personal home use. And then the second floor of the garage was built for also personal use up there. Thought about using it for some business use, and then decided that it would be better off, personal use, because I didn't need that amount of space, it was too much for me, which I thought I needed at first, while plans changed, I'm able to work in a smaller space, so that happened. But then the garage was built to, the whole thing was built two feet too short, so that's why in the photos, they don't fully look like this, because they ended up having to make the addition over the first floor, eight-feet-tall walls, so the roof lines didn't line up, because they were too short. But.
That's, that's good, that's, that's fine. Questions from board?
Yeah. So was the original garage that was there, that was taken down, was that also attached to the house?
Yes. Okay. It's always been attached to the house.
Any final questions from the board, to either the city or to Ms. Olson? At this point, I would then recommend that the Zoning Board of Appeals adjourn into closed session. Mr. Chair, I don't know if we're gonna be able to complete everything tonight, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that.
We'll, we'll move into a closed session and then come out with a deliberation if this thing is going to continue.
Okay.
Or, or what.
All right.
I did just want to say that, pretty much, like, I only do personalization on items from my house. I'm not even selling wholesale at Agora or anywhere local. I've done, I made, like, the girls do almost everything now, and that's, I don't do manufacturing on site, I just do customization, and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
We will, the, the board, the Zoning Board of Appeals will be adjourning into closed session to deliberate regarding this matter. If the board will decide whether they're going to complete their deliberations tonight, or do it on another evening, you certainly can wait outside, but we ask you to step back, and we'll keep you advised of what our deliberations are, what our timing is. So I need a motion and a second.
I need a motion to go into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, sub dash one, a deliberation concerning a case, which is a subject to any judicial clause, a judicial trial or hearing before that governmental body on the following request.
So move.
Uh, move by Gracia, second by Ismael. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Please clear the room while we go into deliberations.